Okay, great. Thanks, HGP. Welcome, everyone. This is our regular city council meeting. It's Tuesday, March 28, 2017. Our meeting is located here at the Veterans Memorial Hall. And for the record, all council members are present. Thank you. And we'll call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum. And if we could start off first with a moment of silence. Okay, folks, thank you. And now, if you can join us in a pledge of allegiance.
Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next on our agenda, we do have a proclamation that's going to be in our presentations. We have recognition. We don't have any recognition events tonight. Our closed session report, or no closed sessions prior to council, there's no reportable action. And then mayor council members' reports and announcements. And I'll just start off with a few. We had advisory board interviews at our last, prior to our last council meeting. And I just want to make a public apology for that. Our advisory boards are pretty important to, well, are very important to the city council. We have the opportunity to interview, and we've got talented folks out there. And last meeting, we had advisory board interviews. And as I take on the responsibility of helping schedule meetings, Dr. Teft was unable to attend. I bear that responsibility. I think, doctor, excuse me, I said Dr. Heading. I said, but Dr. Heading was unable to attend. And John, I just want to say I apologize that you weren't able to attend that meeting. I know it's important that citizens that take the time to be a part of our advisory board member, advisory boards, want to have, you know, full input from council. So, sorry you weren't able to attend. And, you know, I take that responsibility. I apologize. Also, there's a little, we had a little bit of, with that, we had some other board members that we went through at that meeting. But I wanted to thank everybody for coming out and the advisory board interviews and congratulate everybody that was appointed. Also, just as far as announcements and reports, I met with Bureau of Energy Management and California Energy Commission. I think all of council members may have done that. There is an advisory task force commissioned by the governor, and it has to do with offshore wind energy. So, they're coming down to Morro Bay, doing interviews. There will be public outreach along the way. I think there's a public notice that's coming up right now, that there'll be some public forums. And the community will have a chance to respond and be involved in what offshore wind and lease sites would look like. And Bureau of Energy and Management will be part of that, as well as California Energy Commission. So, I think we've got some links up on our website. If not, I'll recheck on that. And then finally, one of the, I had the privilege to attend an award ceremony for one of our own firefighter paramedics, Jeff Simpson. And Chief, would you mind, you know, enlightening us a little bit with that particular award ceremony and letting us know, share a little bit about that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Yeah, every year, the local Masonic Lodge, that's our, our local lodge, it's the King Davis Lodge in San Luis Obispo, honors three firefighters in the county in the sterile Bay area. And engineer, paramedic Jeff Simpson was honored for his leadership and his ability to think outside the box on the incident that occurred next to our station with the vehicle following on a mechanic at late at night. A lot of great things happened that night. And I'm convinced, and his captain, Captain George Risha, is convinced also, that we would have had a different outcome if Georgia, correction, Jeff's quick thinking did not occur. And we had a very successful story from a lot of good team players. The Masons, in lieu of giving trophies or big plaques, they made a donation to the Bern Foundation for $2,500 in the names of the three recipients. And it's a great pleasure. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for coming.
Yeah, it's always a privilege to be able to be invited and support our fire department. So, I just want to thank that. So, those are my announcements. And I'll look to my left. Matt, do you want to start us off on any announcements?
Sure. One announcement that I'd like to, well, not necessarily make, but I'd like to get commentary about dredging. We've had dredging going on for some time in the Bay. But I wondered if Mr. Endersby could give us an update on that?
Sure, glad to. So, as you know, the dredge is still out there. As you've probably noticed, if you're on the waterfront, it's been parked for a while. Unfortunately, they've had a couple of accidents over the last two weeks that have set them back. They've dredged about 55% of the material that they contracted to do. Most of it's left in the sand trap area, which is outside the channel, kind of between the inner groin jetty and the south jetty. The problem that they have now is their pipeline, their disposal pipeline is out in the nearshore area off the sand spit in 20 to 40 feet of water. The end is now hopelessly buried in the bottom, and they can't get it out. And they can't pump it out because their pump will blow up. So, they're hoping that Mother Nature or the Michael Yule Frank Lovings boats, when they come back here on the eighth or ninth, will be able to pull that out or contract another boat. They've got two areas left to work in the Morro Channel, one small spot off tidelands, and one very small spot off the end of Morro Bay. Less than a day's pumping once they get down there. And then a couple spots to clean up down by our piers. But really, it's the sand trap that has most of the material. So, the equina is due here on May 1. And the Corps of Engineers needs these folks out by about mid-April to do all their pre-equina testing and work up. So, it's getting close. It's not looking like they're going to get all the quantities that they're contracted to. But miracles have happened. And if they get to pumping again here soon, they might be able to. So, that's the update.
Thanks, Matt. Red?
Yes, I met last week with Senator Munning's field representative, Hunter Snyder. And I took the opportunity to talk to him about a few things that are going on in Morro Bay that I will describe to you. One of them, of course, is the impact that the CalPERS assessment has had on the city. We know that it's going to result in some future cuts in our spending. But also, every other city in California has been adversely affected by these. And I gave Hunter a synopsis of news stories that relate to those. And also, I gave him a copy of a UC Berkeley study that I found that says that full pension funding for public pensions is not needed and may even be harmful. And that full funding is required for private sector pensions, but not for pensions offered by state and local governments, which are unlikely to go out of business. And so, I tried to lay a case for the senator to take up some sort of legislative relief for the cities of California in this area. I also talked about the cost of our water reclamation facility, the effect that it's going to have on the rates of our residents, and also our streets funding, and the possibility that the council has talked about possibly asking for a sales tax initiative next year to continue with our street maintenance. I also tried to draw on some positive news that we are hoping that our Market Plaza development might produce some additional revenue, that we are working on a marijuana ordinance with community input, and that may produce, in the future, some revenue. And I also mentioned the two dreaded words, paid parking. I think that it is inevitable that we will have a community discussion this year about parking management. And that will include the high cost of free parking. A different note, 97.3 The Rock is having a fundraiser this Friday, yeah, this Friday, right here, 6 o'clock. Wine, beer, silent auction, food trucks, and great music. Doors open at 6 o'clock. They need to raise some funds. So, please come out and show your support for local radio. Morro Bay Citizens Bike Committee is going to meet April 5. And some fun things on our agenda going to be, April 22, the Recreation Department is going to have a Family Bike Day at Cloisters Park. Talk about May is Bike Month. May 10 is going to be Bike to School Day. And we are looking for volunteers for the Amgen Tour of California, which is coming to our city on May 16. If you'd like to volunteer to help out for a couple of hours on that day, contact Chuck Stoll or Ray McKelvey. Office hours, I will have office hours again this coming Saturday at Sun 'n Buns from 9 until 10 o'clock. Anybody who wants to talk to me about anything, please come by. After that, I'll take a business walk and see how things are going with our merchants. Two weeks ago, during office hours in my business walk, I heard that Morro Bay Boulevard actually does have a pretty good flow of pedestrian traffic on weekends. And weekend sales have been not too bad, although winter's been slow. I found out that George Leeg sells T-shirts and sweatshirts in his new office where the visitor center used to be. Found out Lenny Blue is recovering. And Grandma Beverly is lining up bands for spring and summer at the gathering place, corner of Morro Bay Boulevard and Main Street. And she reported that she was very happy that Mr. Buckingham visited her and helped her out with downspouts and got a tripping hazard fixed. The Great Bleeft Deli is open. Abraham is serving Middle Eastern and Mediterranean food. Better Homes and Gardens Realty has acquired what used to be Morro Bay Realty on the corner of Main Street and Morro Bay Boulevard. And they had a ribbon cutting Saturday night put on by the Chamber. And the Chamber's going to have a mixer next Wednesday in North Morro Bay at 5:30 at our new brew pub, Three Stacks and a Rock. I urge you again, when you think of spending money, please think of Morro Bay first. This is how we help one another through hard times. Spend your money locally. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. John?
Good evening. I'm your liaison to the County Air Quality Control Board. I wanted to give a shout out to that board. They have a wonderful website that you can go to, acpd.org. And you can get a number of different opportunities for incentives. Example, I replaced my wood-burning fireplace with a gas fireplace and received a $2,000 rebate. And there are significant other benefits that are on there. I'm not going to tell you the other ones, because there are a number of them that you need to go look at and get the opportunity to get some income. And that offset for me, 50% of the cost of replacing that unit. And so, not only that, but they will allow you to sign up for their air quality warnings. And I just got one for today. Fortunately, it's in South County, not here. But they do have a notification system for when we have air quality issues. And so, I highly recommend that you visit the website and look for the numerous incentives that are possible to reduce air emissions and decrease our carbon footprint. And you might be able to make a little money.
Marla?
Good evening, everyone. Yes, I do have a couple of announcements. First of all, to follow up on what the mayor was talking about, their first public opportunity for people to learn about wind energy technology is coming up on April 13 at 6 o'clock PM at the County Board of Supervisors office. And that will be a public, it's open to the public, presentation by the Bureau of Energy Management. And then also, a reminder that this weekend is the Citywide Yard Sale. So, be prepared. There's going to be a lot of folks in town for the yard sale. It's a big event here in Morro Bay. And it will be followed, I think, about a week later, when we will have free garbage pickup. And maybe, Rob, you can tell us about that.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to refresh my memory and go to our website where we can find all the information that we need.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot. But it's very shortly thereafter.
It is. And
Folks can find out on the website.
On the website. And for large material, large appliances, you need to call ahead to Morro Bay Garbage.
Okay. Anyways, it's a good time for spring cleanup.
Yes, it is.
All right. Thanks.
Good job, you all. All right. Thank you. That'll conclude the council members' announcements. On to presentations. We have a presentation tonight. It's a child proclamation. So, we have Haila, forgive me, Cluver, and Brittany Ogden. So, Questa College Children's Center, and then Slo County Child Care Planning Council. Council, if you'd like to join me down at the podium, we have a proclamation that we can read and present to these folks.
You're going to read that, right?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I've learned that there's kind of an order to, right here is good. Thank you. Yeah. So, Haila and Brittany. All right. Thank you. All right. Haila, thank you. So, this is a proclamation of the city council of the city of Morro Bay declaring April 2017 as Month of the Child and Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas, Morro Bay City Council recognizes that every moment in a child's life is an opportunity for that child to learn, that the quality of these experiences may determine whether a child succeeds in school and in life, and that all children need caring and loving adults in their lives. And whereas, April, Month of the Child and Child Abuse Prevention Month, mark a time to recognize that our community's children are precious assets, that the quality of their early years is our collective responsibility, and that we commit ourselves to ensuring that each day and every child experiences a high-quality early environment at home, at childcare, at school, and in the community that will promote their optimal development. And whereas, Friday, April 7, 2017, has been named a countywide Wear Blue Day to raise awareness about the many children in our midst who suffer daily from abuse and neglect, and to pledge support for strategies that strengthen families and protect our young ones. And whereas, Saturday, April 8, 2017, we commemorate the Day of the Child at the 39th Annual Children's Day in the Plaza Celebration from 10 a.m. to 3 P.M. in the San Luis Obispo Mission Plaza. This year's celebration, where children and families will have the opportunity to discover creativity, individuality, diversity, and the arts while exploring community resources. And whereas, a variety of other events honoring Month of the Child will provide an opportunity to acknowledge the dedication of individuals and organizations to improve the lives of children's and youth in our county, and raise the awareness of the community employers and elected officials of the need to improve the quality, availability, and accessibility of programs supporting children. Whereas, in this caring and connected county, we will, including and beyond the Month of the Child, continue to dedicate our efforts and our resources to investing in our community's future by investing in and supporting our community's children and youth. And may we remember to listen to and watch the children around us, to have patience, and to allow them the opportunity to enjoy the journey of childhood, as exemplified in the San Luis Obispo County Children's Bill of Rights. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Morro Bay City Council is proclaiming April 2017 as Month of the Child and Child Abuse Prevention Month, and April 8, 2017, as Day of the Child. So, thank you very much for this. And we have a proclamation honoring this. So, if you have a few words, and then our council would like to say thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Can we give you a few things?
Yes, if you want to have.
Thank you very much for allowing myself, Haila Halfley-Cluver. And I am the Director of the Children's Programs at Questa College and the Early Childhood Education Program. But I also have had quite a few jobs over those 39 years. And I've been there since the beginning of the Children's Day in the Plaza, which is making me feel a little bit aged here right now. Brittany Ogden is a fantastic new young person getting started in San Luis Obispo County with the Child Care Planning Council. And we started many years ago in the late 70s of the Commission on Children and Youth, then became the Child Abuse Prevention Council, then we've had a lot of names. So, thank you so much. And thank you for your time, everybody, for letting us bring the proclamation to your city. And we'll leave you a few bags of things.
Sure. Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
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 Thank you. It's always a great way to start off the meeting. Thanks. And with that, we, before we go on to public comment, and we do have speaker slips in the back. So, folks, for public comment for items, not, to speak to items not on the agenda, we're going to be opening up public comment in a minute. And then we have speaker slips for every item on the agenda. So, we have a few items on the agenda, and we'll ask for speaker slips for that. Prior to opening up public comment, we do lead in with a business spot. So, I was going to introduce Rafi Dorian. And he's going to come up and open up our public comment period with a business spot and introduce himself. You might have to turn that mic over to, thank you. Welcome.
Well, thank you and good evening. First, I would like to thank the mayor and the city council for having me here tonight to give me this opportunity to present myself and my business to the community. My name is Dr. Rafi Dorian. I am a veterinarian with over 20 years of veterinary experience. I own Central Coast Veterinary Services, which provides mobile veterinary care for dogs, cats, and horses. I have known Morro Bay my entire life, and I've known this whole area my entire life. I won't bore you with pictures, but that picture up in the corner is me when I'm five years old, sitting on a pony in Morro Bay. So, I've always had the urge to come back. But, and then as I got older, I actually did my, under pre-vet studies at Cal Poly San Luis Obispo. I graduated from UC Davis School of Veterinary Medicine in 1996. And then I obtained additional training to receive a master's in preventive veterinary medicine in 1999. As I said before, one of my dreams was to come back here. My first veterinary job was actually in San Luis Obispo. I was there for a couple of years. And then family situation came up, came up where I had to move. So, I was disappointed about that. But always in the back of my mind, I wanted to come back to Morro Bay and San Luis Obispo. I've had the opportunity to work in many parts of California, but I've always tried to stay on the coast. I finally ended up in San Diego, and that's where I've been for the past 15 years. There, I owned two multi-doctor small animal hospitals and an equine practice. Recently, my family and I had the opportunity to come back here, and we took it. So, sold everything, and we came lock, stock, and barrel up here about, going to be about eight months now. So, Central Coast Veterinary Services has one main goal, and that is to provide high-quality, personalized veterinary medicine to the community, and to do that in the comfort of your home or farm. This reduces the stress for you and your pet, and allows me to spend more time with you and your pet. You know, for horses, it's common to go to the farm. That's a standard thing that we do. House calls for dogs and cats, not so common. But I think it's really needed in this community. I try to emphasize preventative medicine. I believe we need to be proactive instead of reactive with our pets' health. We should try to prevent diseases, not just treat them after they occur. And I feel community involvement is very important, and I hope to have a positive impact on this community in the upcoming years. I'm excited that I'm already working with the local community radio station, 97.3. So, working on all that. If anyone would like more information or have questions, you can visit my website at ccoastvet.com, or call me at 805-316-1990. Thank you again for your time. And I'm looking forward to helping the animals in Morro Bay and keeping them healthy.
Thanks, Rafi. Appreciate it. Thanks for kicking off our public comment.
Thank you.
Okay, folks, as we move on to public comment, so I have public comment for items not on the agenda. And we have a crowd of folks here. So, hopefully, who's, we have, who's here? Are there folks here for the city audit, or the Market Plaza, or the WRF? Or if we have folks for that? Okay. So, and I have items just for public comment right here. Okay. So, we'll start it off with that. So, first up for public comment would be Carol Swain. And then following Carol is Carol Truesdale.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. My name is Carol Swain. I am a resident of Morro Bay. The issue I want to speak about tonight is the water reclamation facility. The time to move forward is now. We have spent many months and much money studying the factors to determine the best path forward. What we have learned is that it will be expensive. Like oil, water will probably become even more expensive. And we have learned that no one plan exists that will please all of us. Each of you ran on a platform that included construction of the best water reclamation facility for now and for the future. We elected you. Please do not become Los Osos. Act now. Begin construction. Move forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Carol. Carol Truesdale. And then Lexie Bell.
Hi, I'm Carol Truesdale, a resident here since 1995. And Red took my thunder. I'm a DJ at 97.3 FM The Rock. I do bodacious yayas on the third Friday of every month, and cooking on Saturdays from 3 to 3:30. So, we are having our fundraiser and event here at the conference, here at the Vets Hall. And I encourage everyone to come. There's beautiful silent auctions. And three of the council members also are part of the radio show. Our mayor, John Heading, is our Dr. John Medicine Man. And Mr. Davis does pops in every now and then. So, thank you all. And I hope all the citizens can come, okay? It's free. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Lexie Bell. Welcome, Lexie. And then Robert Walker, followed by Lexie.
Hello. My name is Lexie Bell. I work at the Morro Bay National Estuary Program. And April 1 is the beginning of our State of the Bay Month. So, I wanted to come and let everyone know all the exciting events we're going to have for you to come explore our estuary through science. So, we have a new State of the Bay report out on our website. You can go to, you can Google the name of our program is the easiest way, Morro Bay National Estuary Program, or go to mbnep.org. And I brought a couple cards to highlight the events that we're doing. The flagship beginning of the events is April 1. We're having us talk about clean water. So, you can learn how the water's doing in the bay and the creeks that feed into the bay, where it's clean, and where we're working on improving water quality, and the kinds of projects that we do, and ways that our volunteers help us understand water quality in the bay. And that's going to be upstairs from the libertine brew pub down on the Embarkadero. They have an upstairs room there. They're also launching a beer in honor of the bay that you can come enjoy if you'd like. And you can enjoy that through the month of April at libertine. So, we're excited to have them as partners. We also have a number of other events throughout the month. I'll highlight a couple that are in Morro Bay. There's an art and science reception at the Marina Square Gallery in our building at Marina Square at Marina and Embarkadero. And that'll be a great event where we're going to And that'll be a great event where we're going to showcase some of the science and water quality information behind the waterscapes that their artists have put together. So, that'll be a fun combination of art and science. There's also a lot of hands-on kids' activities with the Morro Bay Natural History Museum on the calendar, lots of hikes and walks throughout the entire month. You can go see all different parts of the watershed and the bay. We'll be doing a few other talks as well if you prefer the more academic setting. So, please check them out on our website and check out the State of the Bay Report. We write it for you, the community, so you can understand how the bay is doing. I'm also going to leave a flyer in the back if anyone wants to look at that.
Great, Lexi. Thank you. Robert Walker and then Meredith Bates.
My name is Robert Walker, 523 Widby Street. There's been a huge attempt to try to get public input and review of reports and I've got to say that the lag time provided for those reviews are really short due to the complexity and volume of the reports. And so, if there's any way they could get published earlier before meetings so that you can have some meaningful input. I've given up several weekends and burned the oil at night trying to do a review that's meaningful. It's really, really difficult because of the level of complexity. So, again, if there's any way the reports and agendas could be published prior to the minimum time that currently is used, it would really be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Meredith Bates and then Cynthia Holly.
My name is Meredith Bates. I live at 670 Napa Avenue. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I really want to thank you for all the work that you've been doing. I really appreciate your service to the community. And I want to speak for a moment about water, just in general. We're probably all aware that over a billion people on the planet do not have an adequate water supply. And I really appreciate this city's dedication to conservation, to the environment, and for caring for our low-income citizens. And I want to, I don't know if I can get this in the projector, but I want to talk about the Home Share Program, Home Share Slow, because it's a way to conserve space, water, and provide opportunities for people to be together and have community. So, Home Share Slow is a local nonprofit and it provides an opportunity for people to share a home, someone who cannot afford to live in this community, which probably there's quite a few people like that, and another person who might already live here and has maybe two or three extra rooms and may not have a lot of opportunity for interaction with others. Sometimes, some of the older folks in our community, the only person they see in a week is the one who delivers senior nutrition. So, Home Share Slow is a program that matches up people who need housing and who want to have someone to share a home with. And Home Share Slow does a great job of screening and matching and even if there's some kind of a problem or dispute later on, they do some kind of mediation and assistance to the renter and the person who's renting out the room. So, I have, I made some copies for you guys and I hope you will take a look at it.
Thank you, Meredith. Cynthia Holly? That's the last speaker I have for public comment.
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Holly and I'm here tonight on behalf of Together We Will, Indivisible Morro Bay Action Team. And I'm submitting a Public Records Act request for the city's monthly expenditure reports for 2015 and 2016. And I've attached an example of exactly what it is I'm looking for.
Anybody else for public comment?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Rick Moore and I'm from Morro Bay. I just want to thank you for the common meeting you had earlier at 3:30 with the Planning Commission. I think those meetings are amazingly interesting. You had one before. I wish you'd have them again. And I think the input and the comments from the Planning Commission is invaluable. I just want to thank you for doing those meetings and I hope we'll have more. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick Moore. I don't have any more speaker slips. I was going to close public comment and bring it back to council. Okay, public comment is closed. We'll bring it back to council. Any follow-up on any comments from public comment? Looking at staff, seeing none? Okay, we'll move on. Any comments from council? None? Okay. All right, with that, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda is consent. And we do have a public comment for consent, the consent agenda. And I don't have any speaker slips for any public comment for consent. So, with that, I will ask council if there's any items to be pulled for, from public comment or for consent. Looking to my right, I'm getting a motion from Red.
Yeah, A8, please.
A8? Matt?
No.
No?
Okay. John?
A7.
A7? Marla?
A9.
A9. I take a motion to approve all items on the consent agenda except for A7, A8, and A9.
So, move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Heading, second by Mr. Davis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries. Five oh. Moving on, item, I'm just going to go and order A7. John?
Sure. Referring to page 26, item number six, which speaks to the necessary, isn't staff report, by the way, the ramp requirements. And item number six specifically says potentially adding a low freeboard kayak launching float separate from the main vessel, launching floats. I just wanted to encourage us to look at alternative use possibilities for boat ramps, not just boats, but we have a number of different uses of the bay. And access becomes extremely important. And so, I would just like to ask staff to consider item number six and evaluate all the potential opportunities to include access for such things as kayaks, as they mentioned, but potentially other types of implements that we use in the bay.
Sure, absolutely. We can incorporate that. So, that dock, that low freeboard dock is intended for just that sort of use, kayaks, hand-launch, non-motorized, to get them away from the motorized launch because it tends to be a user-conflict area. So, that's the idea with that. So, we'll be looking into that and furthering up on that as well.
Matt?
And Eric, I do have another question. I emailed you this the other day. In terms of looking at the boat launch facility grant agreement and this grant application is for $250,000, could you explain the totality of the boat launch and parking area there and what this, in the years to come, could mean for down there?
Sure. So, the grant, this first grant for $250,000 is for planning design to get the design to about 60% completion, at which point we get an engineer's estimate. The total cost is about $1.9 million as currently scoped out by DBW. So, we get through planning and design, get an engineer's estimate. At that point, we apply for the second grant for the remainder of the difference from DBW to do the completion of it. It's replacing the concrete ramp itself, the boarding floats, repaving the parking lot, restriping, getting ADA compliance all throughout the facility from Tylenol Park, restrooms all the way through over to the launch ramp and down to the docks to the south and north, restroom ADA upgrades and parking lot ADA upgrades and our long-awaited economic booster, the fish cleaning station. That will get completely rebuilt as well. And then that low board, low freeboard float system that I spoke to Mr. Heading about for kayak and other launchers. So, really a 20, 25-year upgrade facelift to the whole facility and getting up to design standards, to modern design standards.
And could you include in terms of timing? I realize that this is now 2017 and so this funding might not necessarily come in this immediate next fiscal year. It could be out a couple, is that what you meant?
Correct. So, timing-wise, you know, this $250,000 was approved in the governor's budget for this year, the '16-'17 budget. Unfortunately, it doesn't get, we don't get to do anything with it until it's approved by Boating and Waterways Commission, which happens next week down in Los Angeles. So, they scheduled this for the April commission meeting. Assuming they approve it, then we get the money, we get going on the design and engineering. We can't apply for the second part until we get to that 60% design level, which will be past the application period for this next coming fiscal year. So, we'll be applying for that in the winter, spring, 2018 for the next grant cycle. So, assuming we get funded in that year, the earliest we'll get funded is in the '18-'19 budget year. And if all things work and the stars line up and the sun shines properly, we'll maybe be under construction in the winter of 2018, 2019.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We can take a motion to approve that one by one as we're doing that, if you'd like. Are there any questions for A7? Seeing none, we'll take a motion to approve A7.
Move to approve. A7?
We have a motion by Mr. Heading, a second by Matt. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries five oh. Thank you. And then item A8, Red?
Yes. A8 is the, Morro Bay Oyster Company is taking out a loan, a small loan, to cover operating expenses because the rainy weather has hurt their business. And they're using their, the deed of trust for their lease site as collateral. So, my question is, if somehow the oyster company defaults and the lender, Seahan Corporation, then takes control of the lease, are we as a city prepared to deal with that? I assume Seahan Corporation would then be obligated to fulfill all terms of the lease that the oyster company has executed with the city.
That's correct.
So, the question is, if that should happen, is the city prepared to deal with that eventuality?
Yeah. As Mr. Penone says, the lender would step into the shoes of the leaseholder and be operating the lease site and they would be fully required to comply with all the terms and conditions of the lease.
Okay. And I'm just wondering, is this a normal thing? Do we often see this kind of?
Leaseholders, securitizing the leasehold interest for loan purposes is not uncommon. It happens regularly up and down the waterfront on remodels and rebuilds, typically not for operating expenses. That doesn't happen very often, but it's not unheard of. And in Mr. Maloney's case, given the winter and the departments from the Health Department, he's not been selling oysters for many, many, many months and that's a tough business model.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I definitely want to support the oyster company. So, I just wondered if this was uncommon, if we know what to do with it. So, okay, thanks. I'm good with that.
If I could just add for those that may not know, so it might sound sort of funny to cover operating expenses, but what Mr. Maloney is in the middle of doing is putting in three extremely large storage tanks that will allow him to harvest oysters before the rain comes. So, if it rains more than a half inch, he can't harvest oysters for 14 days, 12 days. And so, he's essentially been shut down all this winter because we've had rain almost every other week. And so, this, what should be a short-term loan is going to help pay for that improvement that will allow him to operate through future winters. And he's been working on the project for a year and a half.
Okay, that's good. I want to do everything that we can do to support the oyster company. So, with that, I move to approve item A8.
Motion by Red, second by Matt. Any further discussion? None? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries five oh. A9, Marla?
Yeah. I asked to pull this because I know there's been quite a bit of community discussion over the last several weeks about the wastewater, or I should say, the water reclamation facility. And I just wanted to take the opportunity, since we have on the consent calendar here, an update on progress, to perhaps dispel some of those rumors that have been going around. And so, I have just asked Rob if he would answer some questions for me, which I know the answers to, but I would like to make sure that the public knows the answers to them. So, could you start just with a very brief history of the site selection process? I didn't ask you about that one, but I think it's helpful to understand where we've been and how we got to where we are briefly.
Sure. The site selection process actually started really before the reboot of this project when we were still looking at the site at its existing location. Coastal Commission wanted us to look at other sites. So, we came up with a rather large list of potential sites. That became the basis after the denial of the permit as the, some of the first sites that we looked at. We had a public meeting where we had large maps on the walls and people could put their dots on the favorite or least favorite sites, went through a rigorous screening, two-phase screening process, rough screening and then fine screening analysis, and came down to several sites that we looked at being the Rancho Colina Site, Rigetti, Morro Valley Sites, and then Choro Valley Sites, one of which was the South Bay Boulevard property. When the Morro Valley alternatives were put aside for a number of reasons, neighborhood compatibility and other issues with property owners, we looked towards the South Bay Boulevard site. And that's how we got there probably close to a year ago now and rebooted the facility's master plan to complete that work on that site. And if you want to, me too, I can just go through your list of questions and maybe give the question an answer.
Okay, that would be fine. That would be fine.
One of the questions is, how many acres are we looking at of the South Bay Boulevard site? Somewhere around 28 acres, although the facility takes up much less than that. The property owner doesn't want to sell a lollipop in the, you know, off there and wants us to square off the corner. So, we'll have some buffer around the seven-ish acres treatment, reclamation facility site with the 28 acres. You asked me for what it would cost. That is a good question. I would estimate, being not a real estate, nor a real estate appraiser, somewhere in the neighborhood of $10,000 an acre would be what we might be looking at. But the sale will be based on the appraisal of the real property. Turning to the facility's master plan and looking at the construction costs for Phase One of the project, which is the water reclamation, the treatment facility that gets us to tertiary treatment, it's about $120 million, including a 25% contingency and all the soft costs. So, those engineering costs, the planning costs, the permitting costs, and the contingencies are rolled up in there. What is the cost difference moving from the Morro Valley Rigetti Site to the South Bay Site? I would say somewhere in the order of magnitude of up to about $14 million. It depends on which components we end up with in the project, so up to about $14 million. The water reclamation facility or the Phase Two of the project, that is approximately $9.8 or $10 million for that portion of the construction. To bring us to, in the water reclamation plan, those IPR alternatives or groundwater injection, that's about $17.5 million for either one of those alternatives. There's a couple hundred thousand dollars difference between Alternative Three and Four, but right around $17.5 million. 25% contingency, we're looking at what that dollar amount is. Phase One, it's $21.8 million and Phase Two, about $2.6 million. How will the project be funded? We're looking at SRF loan that would be backed by our wastewater rates. And there will probably be, there will be some grant funds towards this project. As we heard from our, the firm Kestrel who's helping us with the grants, we could expect kind of reliably about 10%. who's helping us with, uh, the grants, we could expect, kind of reliably, about 10%. And if we're really good, about 20%. So somewhere in that order of magnitude range, 10% to 20% of the project costs could be grant funded. Um, the next question is regarding the rates. So we're in the middle of a new rate study, um, for this new facility. But we, two years ago, we did a rate study based on a, um, project cost of about $75 million shared with, with Cayucus. And then we had some contingencies on there. So that rate study funded about $72 million of project costs. So we're looking to fund the, with the new rates, the difference between, uh, the $72 million project and whatever the, um, project is that we, um, agree to move forward with. Let's say it's a, um, a $166.5 million project, like one of the alternatives in the, um, water reclamation plan. That means we need to fund an additional $94.5 million, um, through an increase in rates. And, um, my crystal ball, without the benefit of the rate study, might predict that, um, the rate increase per million dollars, the monthly rate impact per million dollars of the construction cost is somewhere in the order of magnitude of 75 cents to a dollar. That results in a approximate rate of $160 to $185 a month for, um, uh, single-family residents. Um, what is the status on, um, loan applications or grant to finance the project? Um, we really need a completed environmental impact, uh, report, complete environmental review, um, to complete those, um, loan applications. We are in the process of completing a letter of interest with EPA for their, um, WIFIA loan guarantee program. And, um, that is a low-interest federally guaranteed loan. Um, what are the costs of project delays, either through, um, um, the Prop 218 process failing or some other, um, issue? Um, there are potential fines of, um, from the regional board. Um, the maximum, uh, manager, the maximum penalties are, um, $32,500 per day would be the maximum, um, penalties allowed. Um, the, the other cost is the time value of money. So, um, uh, construction costs seem to continue to march increasing ever so much, uh, um, as we move on with time. I looked at the, the difference between, um, when we started this project in, um, this particular phase of this project in, um, January 2013 to present day, using the, um, engineer news record, a construction cost index for, um, the West Coast. And constructions costs over that time period have gone up about 13%. And I think those are all of your questions.
They were all of my questions. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
As I say, I, I, I had just heard so many sort of numbers tossed around and comparisons made, and I just thought it was really important that we get on the record, the background of the project and where we're at and how we got here. And just to try to correct some of those misstatements or rumors that, that travel around the community. So, thank you, Rob. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. And it's a rather daunting document, but, um, really, I pulled all this information out of our, um, facilities master plan. So it's available on our website. Um, if you don't want to read that version, there is this version also, uh, which is the, uh, executive summary. And then if this is overwhelming, there's also a two-page summary of this available on the website, too. So, um, you could start with the two-pager and work your way up, uh, to learn more about the project.
Thank you.
All right, Marla's, thanks. We take a motion to approve item A9?
I move that we approve, um, item A9.
Motion by, um, Marla's, a second by Matt. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Motion carries 5-0. That concludes our, um, consent agenda, and we can move on to, just want to check in if, if we need to take a short five-minute break before we get going into our first item on the agenda. Any, um, how's everybody doing? Everybody okay? All right. So first item on the agenda, um, we can get started with item C1, and that's the consideration of the draft, draft water, uh, reclamation plan. And, uh, we're doing a little bit of shuffle, so we'll get these guys up here.
It might take us a few seconds to get moved around here.
No worries.
I'm gonna slide down.
Okay, so I only have one speaker slip for public comment for this item. Just want to make sure if those, uh, folks in the audience that want to speak to this item, if you would, would, uh, please fill out a speaker slip for this item. I'd appreciate it. Otherwise, we're only looking at one person for public comment on this item. Okay.
All right. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, John Rickinbach. And, and what we'd like to do is, um, I'm going to introduce this item here, which is to say in general, it's a presentation of the Master Water Reclamation Plan. But there's a few things we're trying to accomplish here tonight, and a few things we're not trying to accomplish here tonight. Uh, in general, uh, I've got up on the screen the, the things we are trying to do. Uh, first of all, we, we do want to acknowledge a lot of the input that, that Rob actually answered right there. That covers a few of the items. Um, but, but we're quite aware of a lot of questions, um, and have prepared for, if they do come up, um, some of the answers to those that relate to the technical issues in the report, um, things having to do with cost, process, and so forth. It's also important to understand, um, we're not at a decision point tonight. We're really presenting information. And, and we do want to let you know where we are in the overall process. And, um, and then in addition to the plan itself and the findings there, describe where we go from here, both relative to reclamation and in the process in general. So tonight, there's a few things we'd like to do specifically. Um, I'm going to introduce the project. A reminder then of the goals that have led us to where we are. Don't want to belabor that, but it is important to, to keep coming back to that. Um, I think Rob went through the project background pretty well. I'll keep that pretty brief. Um, then we want to, then I'll hand it over to, to Eileen Shields from MKN Associates, uh, to, to really go through the scope of what the Master Water Reclamation Plan's all about, and the recycled water opportunities we considered, different alternatives, how they were evaluated, um, costs associated with all of that, and then ultimately conclusions and recommendations from that point, and move on from there.
Thank you.
There's really a few things that are coming into play relative to trying to address the issues, um, in, in this effort. It's really a, a function of community goals and many different efforts that come together to inform that related to water. Uh, there, of course, is the Facility Master Plan, which we went through. Tonight, we're going to be talking about the Master Water Reclamation Plan. And then there's the city's, uh, One Water Plan effort, which is really trying to, to tie all the water and wastewater and other water-related issues together. So it's a complicated process to get us through this. And we're talking about one component of that tonight in some depth. Um, a reminder here about the goals that, that the water reclamation facility is based on. Goals, um, uh, set forth by the community, adopted by the council. Um, it's been over, uh, it's been three or more years since this has, has been the case, but important to keep in mind. We're talking about producing tertiary disinfected wastewater, reclaiming that water cost-effectively. Uh, we did consider the idea of, um, allowing onsite composting as a driving factor, which we studied. That, that's actually an issue we, we think is best handled off-site. We've talked about that before. Um, designing the site potentially for energy recovery, um, designing to treat for contaminants of emerging concern. In other words, a lot of high-level treatment, and then potentially allowing for other municipal uses at the site. That's something that's been on the, the radar since the beginning, but it isn't specifically connected to the project per se. But it is something we want to make sure people understand. Uh, we also, these are important, too, ensuring compatibility with neighboring land uses, um, and then being operational within five years, which in the context of this project means in 2021. Um, relative to the background of the project, I don't need to go into this in some depth because I think Rob covered that pretty well. But I do have slides that do talk about that briefly. Uh, but basically, since 2013, we've been up to a lot of things to get us here. I think Rob did a nice job touching on how we got to the site where we are. And of course, most recently, the Facility Master Plan was rolled out, um, in the fall of last year, which really talked about the what and the look and the components of what a, a project would look like, um, in terms of a treatment facility, and essentially the cookbook for when, for what a design builder would use to actually, uh, put that onto paper and ultimately build that. Then we're also talking about, um, in the more recent, um, in the recent days, well, actually since last year, we did get to the, the, uh, the South Bay Boulevard site, um, in June of this past year. So it's been nearly a year since we've been studying that first through the Facility Master Plan, and then on into what we're now in the, in the Master Reclamation Facility phase. Um, and that's what these next couple of slides show. Just a little background slides, also to put into context that, um, the master schedule that we've been on for, um, a couple of years were right on target relative to where we intended to be, uh, in terms of the actions we've been at. Uh, we did begin the EIR scoping process in August of last year, informed by technical studies on the site, um, entered into an MOU with the property owner last October. Um, since then, the draft Facility Master Plan was out, um, in November, uh, a month ahead of schedule. And today, the Master Water Reclamation Plan is out, um, as of last week, and that is also on schedule. We are preparing an EIR at this point to address both of those documents and the contents of that at that site. We'll also be considering a number of alternatives as required under SEQA. And the significance of doing that EIR is that when it is out for public draft in August, and we expect that to be the case, um, that that will provide a great forum for public input to inform both the Facility Master Plan, the process in general, the water reclamation plan, and so forth. We're looking at certifying the final EIR at the end of the year, and that's important because that, that opens the door to funding opportunities and also allows the ability for, um, having different contractors bid, design bid, um, design-build contractors bid on the project, and then move forward with the, with the construction into, um, the next year in 2019 and so forth. So where we're at now is, um, or at that point, then the construction begins in 2019 to be operational in 2021. So that's the overview of the schedule, and I think the short story there is we're on schedule. Now, I just want to conclude before I hand it over to Eileen with a few things that we do know, and, um, and the starting point for the discussion tonight. We do know we can build a facility at the South Bay Boulevard site that meets community project goals. We do know that that project by June 2021 is possible. And if we do implement the recycled water component simultaneously, that puts us essentially two years ahead of schedule of what we originally, um, had projected. And it also, we do know that groundwater injection and extraction appears to be feasible as a reclamation option. And I think that's something we want to talk about in more depth, obviously, here tonight. We are also, uh, we do know that, um, we can provide recycled water for groundwater injection to supplement the city's water supply and provide water independence, which is a city goal. Um, there are certain advantages of accelerating that recycled water component, making, uh, the city eligible for more grant money, long-term construction cost savings potentially, and a potential reduction in the, in the use of state water, um, and more reliance, self-reliance for the city. So this is maybe the most important thing that we do know, um, and it relates to cost, and I think it's an important thing. And I think people see numbers out there, and we'll get into this in a little bit more depth. And here, we're talking about an estimated cost without the recycled water component of $124 million. And with the recycled water component, $153 to $168 million, depending on a few things. As Rob pointed out, and it's worth reminding people, that includes the contingents, a 25% contingency and all components related to both, um, the treatment and recycling and, and delivery of that water. It also is really a signpost. It's really an estimate that is going to be refined, um, when contractors bid on the project competitively in a design-build process. And really, it's mostly significant for you because it's what you need to use as the basis for understanding what the outside envelope might be relative to how it might affect rates. Obviously, if a design builder can come in and do it a lot more, um, efficiently than that, great. If they can meet the, the specs of what we need to accomplish. I think there's a lot of discussion in the community about, well, can't we just do it really cheaply? And the answer is, if we can, we will do that. And that's really a function of what the market will drive. So we'll get back to that later in the discussion here. But I do want to set that concept out, that we're not the designers. We're here to provide estimates to allow you to see what it would take to implement the city's goals. Now here, the, I'm just going to put up a couple of slides briefly that have a lot of information on them that I don't want you to go through. But we do have a lot of findings from the previous Facility Master Plan and various studies that relate to the site and technical issues and so forth. And we can come back to this, um, later on. And again, also, a lot of issues related to water independence, um, and that, yes, it is possible, um, and that, that, um, that there are opportunities here, as we discussed through the, um, facility or the, the, the Master Water Reclamation Plan, how this is achievable. And I think at this point, what I'd like to do is, um, get on to the next slide here and, and briefly, uh, have a segue into Eileen Shields' presentation. Um, she's really going to be providing the overview of the Master Water Reclamation Plan, um, the components of that, the options that we looked at, um, the relative costs and even estimates about the different alternatives, about what we could do with the water and some of the technical assumptions that go into what we did to figure out what we could do with the water. And then lay out the next steps about where we can go at this point. And at the very end of this, um, after she's done, we'll be able to come back to you and answer your questions, uh, that relate to a number of topics that I know that are, that the community has interest in. So over to Eileen then.
Okay, thanks, John. Um, my name's Eileen Shields. I'm a senior engineer with Michael K. Nunley and Associates. And I've been working on the water reclamation facility project for the city of Morro Bay for about three years now. So I'm very excited to be here. I am not used to speaking into a microphone, so bear with me. I have a little bit of jitters. Um, but I'm going to do my best to run through this in an organized fashion and really lay out the, the Master Water Reclamation Plan, the draft document that was just recently released, try and do it in an organized fashion, and bring you to the, the major findings and conclusions and recommendations and next steps. So what's the scope of the, the plan? The, the main components really were reviewing the findings from the Facility Master Plan, and that included, uh, water demands for the community, existing and future, wastewater flows, treatment requirements for the water reclamation facility, and potential reuse alternatives, and the cost estimates that were provided in Facility Master Plan that provide a basis for the budgetary planning. From there, we looked at, I don't, you know, we identified recycled water opportunities and evaluated their feasibility. And then, once we got those feasible recycled water projects, we, we analyzed them, put together some preliminary criteria, and, um, evaluated those alternatives against the criteria that were based on community goals in order to provide some recommendations. that were based on community goals in order to provide some recommendations and some estimated budgets. And then finally, we looked at the, the financing plan. So a lot of words on this slide again, but really the point is that there's several historical studies were reviewed as part of the basis for this report, and we also did a lot of current, there's a lot of current evaluations that are listed here. Studies were performed as part of this effort. We looked at evaluations associated with the existing wastewater treatment plants and reuse opportunities that were looked at at that point as a basis of some of the opportunities evaluated for this report. And then the city also did some hydrogeological studies in the Choro Valley, the Morro Valley. We looked at regulatory implications of various discharge options for the water reclamation facility. There was some groundwater model clean that was done mainly to assess the potential for groundwater recharge. The city did some salinity identification studies that were really aimed to identify salts loading to the sewer system, which can impact treatment requirements and costs for advanced treatment, and put together a preliminary salinity control plan that could aim to reduce those salts loading to the sewer plant, the wastewater facility. And one of the last reports listed here is the facility master plan that really provided a, a lot of the basis for this report. So the major components of the facility master plan that went into the master water reclamation plan are basically the, the flows and loadings, all these different items listed here, that led to the major pieces of the water reclamation facility project, pipelines, lift stations, your treatment plants, your base wharf. And then it also looked at advanced treatment requirements for various reuse alternatives, and they provided the associated budgets for those various alternatives and the range of alternatives. So I just want to talk briefly about wastewater treatment. I'm not going to go into all the details, although it's one of my big interests in life, it appears. But this diagram is, is really meant to just show you, there's, there's several components that go into the wastewater treatment. And everything there, except for the circled area, the advanced treatment is going to be part of your base wharf if you are to meet these community goals that were laid out to produce tertiary disinfected recycled water. Okay? And the only thing that's really going to vary for these various recycled water uses are the components of the advanced treatment and the amounts or the sizing of that advanced treatment piece. Okay? So that's, that was the focus as far as treatment for the master water reclamation plan was your advanced treatment, which I'll get into in a little bit, actually on this slide. So what is advanced treatment? It's, it's, as it implies, it's a higher level of treatment that can be driven either by your, your water quality goals for your end use, you know, what kind of water quality do I need for this particular crop and what is the, the user expecting as far as chlorides or other components? Or it could be driven by your regulations. So a very good example is indirect potable reuse. California Code of Regulations Title 22 requires a certain level of advanced treatment for all of the water that's going to be used for IPR, indirect potable reuse. And it's used to remove dissolved solids, salts, viruses, organic and inorganic chemicals and emergency, emerging contaminants or contaminants of emergency concern, CECs that you'll hear thrown around. And this graphic kind of shows the various reuse or discharge alternatives, everything from ocean discharge all the way up to supplementing your city's potable water supply through So the master water reclamation plan reviewed a lot of potential reuse opportunities that were born both from historical evaluations and, and a refreshment of that market assessment for recycled water use. And I'd really like to walk through the main points for each, just to explain what we looked at and what was brought forward with the project alternative analysis and what wasn't and why. The first line here is the no recycled water project, and though this project doesn't meet the city's current goals for the water reclamation facility, as one of them is producing reclaimed water, we thought it was important to frame the anticipated minimum water reclamation facility project or wastewater treatment project really that would meet the regulations. So this no recycled water project envisions discharge to the ocean, continuing to do what, what the city's been doing with its treated wastewater. And I'll get into that in a little bit, and it was one that we evaluated further. The second one listed here is urban reuse, and really the main goal for that is the potential to offset potable water demand. So the, the main things here is that we've, we've determined that some advanced treatment would be required to reduce salt levels and chlorides, which can be harmful for her urban irrigation or some commercial reuses, but it's anticipated to be less advanced treatment than would be required for agricultural irrigation. So speaking of agricultural irrigation, it was historically identified as one of the, the highest recycled water use potentials because of the, the agricultural demand and the water demand in the Morro Valley for avocados and other crops. But our initial outreach upon refreshing this market assessment was that there's general unwillingness to participate, and it, really the main, the main driver here for not moving this alternative forward or evaluating it in great detail is it doesn't increase the potential water supply to the city because those users are outside the city's groundwater basin, outside the, the city's water service. So, you know, what if the city could arrange agreement to deliver recycled water for reduced pumping from those agricultural users? They're mainly using groundwater, the same groundwater or basin from the city's groundwater supply. But again, our initial outreach is general unwillingness to participate in such a program. It would require a contract, it would require some basin-wide groundwater management plans, which if you've listened in on other communities trying to work out basin management plans, it can be quite a lengthy and difficult, complicated process. So we would envision that as a risk to potentially delaying a project for the city. And with all the users, even if you had some sign up for that program, you have a lot of other users that are drawing from that same groundwater, and so there's no guarantee that this would increase the city's water supply. So we did not evaluate that further in this report. A similar effort, you know, we considered exchange of recycled water with agricultural users for riparian rights to withdraw groundwater. It carries a lot of the same conclusions, a lot of the same concerns, and it adds on a complex legal issue surrounding riparian rights, and so we didn't move that project into the, the evaluation phase either. The agricultural alternative that was evaluated further was the exchange of recycled water with ag users for pumped groundwater delivered to the city. This alternative would involve a recycled water pipeline to the agricultural users and a potable water pipeline back from those users to the city water system. It's anticipated to require some salts removal, and our initial outreach indicated some interest, some willingness to participate, depending on the quality of that water and the cost. I'll get into that one in a little further detail when we go over the alternatives that we evaluated. So what about stream flow augmentation with recycled water? It's a possibility. We didn't evaluate it further because of regulatory challenges, concerns about the requirement to commit that recycled water to the stream for, you know, long-term or permanent. And really, it, it seemed to, you know, based on the hydrogeologic studies, it had limited feasible water supply benefit, both in the Choro Valley and the Morro Valley where it were reviewed. We looked at indirect potable reuse or groundwater replenishment using surface application. It's basically using percolation ponds, large areas where you perk the recycled water into the ground with the hope that that's going to recharge your groundwater basin and potentially draw it out downstream after a minimum travel time underground. And the studies showed a limited water supply benefit, especially during the wet years. There just doesn't seem to be enough storage in your main aquifers for that to be a feasible We examined the potential to use the recycled water for creating a seawater intrusion barrier. And while it's feasible, it, it also has limited water supply benefit because you're, you're setting up that recycled water, that seawater intrusion barrier near your ocean. And that's the whole point of it, is to, to keep your ocean from coming in, and then if you start drawing that further in, you end up, end up losing most of it to the ocean. So instead, we looked further in, further in upstream in the basin and examined indirect potable reuse or groundwater replenishment using subsurface application or injection wells. Though this is one of the highest mandated treatment requirements, we evaluated it further because it also has the highest potential water supply benefit. Just a couple others. This is, is a repeat, it's indirect potable reuse with injection wells, and it's just, it's looking at, we looked at two different areas to potentially cite those injection wells. And once we got into the alternatives analysis, we found that they varied very little, even when you got down to the project costs, and it's, it's mainly based on the citing study. And then lastly, we considered direct potable reuse. We didn't evaluate that further in this planning effort because it's not currently legal in the state of California, although there are a lot of really exciting pilot studies going on and, and projects around the US that are interesting, but...
One quick point on that one too, is the facility master plan did look at potable, direct potable reuse at a screening level, so there was a very good discussion there of some of the challenges with that, what the state of the art is right now, what some plants in, in other areas around the state might be doing and where that might be leading the California rig. So we felt like it was adequately covered there, and we didn't, we, but we, we referenced it some in the master reclamation plan. Thanks, Eileen.
Okay, so summarizing the recycled water project alternatives that were evaluated further, we've got five major alternatives, really comes down to four, where the, the IPR is both alternative three and four, just differing based on, on the, the location of those injection wells. But alternative zero is your, your no project, no recycled water project. One is, looks at urban reuse, both for irrigation and commercial reuses. Two is agricultural exchange, where we're delivering recycled water and getting some potable water back. And four is indirect potable reuse or groundwater recharge, groundwater replenishment. So walking briefly through the main points for each of these, the major findings, the no recycled water project again does not meet the community goals for tertiary treatment, but we evaluated it further because secondary disinfected recycled water is estimated to be the, the minimum requirements to meet ocean discharge. It would consist of, of a recycled water pipeline. This map shows, I wonder if I can figure out the laser. Shows the water reclamation facility here in a little purple square. You'd have a recycled water pipeline that runs generally the same alignment as was identified for the raw wastewater pipeline pumping from the city's existing sewer to the new wharf and the discharge. So it'd be the wet weather discharge or, or the full discharge down to the existing ocean outfall. Excuse me. Here's the existing wastewater treatment plant here, and we have an ocean outfall that would discharge that water to the ocean. So no potential water supply benefit. We're estimating a total program cost of $124 million. That includes a 25% contingency taken on the construction cost subtotal. And that, that includes your, all your pipelines, all your treatment. It includes land acquisition, estimated land acquisition costs, demolition of the existing wastewater treatment plant. Seems like I'm forgetting something. Permitting, estimated environmental monitoring and mitigation that might be required. So that's what I mean when I say a, a total program cost, not just your, your infrastructure. So our second alternative, urban reuse. It's basically a handful of reuse opportunities that we identified mainly along the pipeline corridor, anticipated pipeline corridor through here. And then we also considered running a pipeline over to the golf course because that represents one of the larger users. It's a anticipated, you know, 300 acre feet per year. However, this is not included in the potential water supply benefit to the city since they do not currently use city water. They have a non-potable well, I think, near Choro Creek somewhere where they draw their water for the, for irrigation of the golf course. So additional treatment for salts removal is estimated to be required and included in these costs. Potential water supply benefit is around 45 acre feet per year, and we come to a, a total program cost including a 25% contingency of $153 million. The next alternative is agricultural exchange. As described before, it consists of providing water for agricultural irrigation in the Morro Valley to allow for a water supply benefit to the city, however, customers would be providing groundwater back to the city. So this has a, a recycled water pipeline going up to the upper Morro Valley from the water reclamation facility here. And then we have a potable water pipeline coming back down Highway 41 to meet with the, the city's water supply system. To be attractive to agricultural users, the master water reclamation plan assumes a ratio of two to one of recycled water provided to those users in exchange for the groundwater that's coming back to the city of the potable water supply. So that equates to an estimated potential potable, potable water supply benefit of 442 acre feet per year. And additional treatment for salts removal would be required where we looked at what type of side stream or how much of that recycled water would need to go through a reverse osmosis system in order to reduce the salts to a desirable level for the ag community. And the same thing was done for urban reuse. So there's less estimated advanced treatment required for urban reuse than for agricultural exchange. And then the next, oh, I'm sorry, let's go over the, the total program cost opinion is estimated to be $168 million, and that includes that construction contingency. So indirect potable reuse would require full advanced treatment on the entire effluent. So that's why it's coming in at a bit of a higher cost. You'll notice here it's $167 million for an estimated total program cost. That's comparable to the ag exchange, so there's more treatment required with this one. There's a lot less pipeline required, which really adds up. So the concepts would be injection of groundwater into the lower Morro Valley and somewhere, excuse me, somewhere in this area, and extraction through existing city wells. Potential water supply benefit estimated between 940 and about 1,100 acre feet per Full advanced treatment, including reverse osmosis and advanced oxidation will be required to meet the regulations and provide protection. And this comes in, that the total program cost, I guess I already mentioned that, but $167 million. So my next slide compares all of these alternatives. Looking at the capital cost opinion subtotal, construction contingency estimated at 25% of the construction cost. So you'll notice this, I don't have all the math here, but, excuse me, I'm having a hard time with the laser. The construction contingency here is not 25% of the... The construction contingency here is not 25% of this capital cost opinion subtotal because this includes more than just construction costs. So like I mentioned, it's permitting and land acquisition and some other components in there. But total program costs ranging from $124 million for your base no recycled water project, secondary disinfected to the ocean, up to $167 or $168 million. So let's consider annual costs. This table provides a summary of the estimated annual costs, and it looks at your, from top to bottom, we've got the estimated total annual program cost. So if you were to break that down into a cost per year repaying your loan. We've got the estimated annual operation and maintenance costs, both for the water reclamation facility and the recycled water components. And then the third row is your estimated water cost based on an assumed 1,200 acre feet per year. I think the 2015 demand was around 1,100, so it's just a basis for comparison and considering potential future demands. You'll see that we've got an approximate $2 million difference between the annual costs when you consider both water, recycled water, and your wastewater treatment. $2 million per year, excuse me. And this estimated annual water costs are based on, your no recycled water project assumes that you're continuing to use state water at 1,200 acre feet per year, and then this gets reduced because you have some offset there from the urban reuse, not much, but 45 acre feet per year. Ag exchange, you have 440 acre feet per year coming from those ag users. And then the IPR is assuming that you're going to reallocate that state water to other communities, and you're using groundwater, mix of groundwater and recycled water treated at the water treatment plant, and perhaps desalination to make up higher demands as So besides costs, the, excuse me, the master water reclamation plan assessed qualitative criteria, all of which were derived by community project goals. And those main criteria are listed here. We've got the potential water supply benefit to the city, which I've talked about. Pipeline lengths, which consider, you know, neighborhood compatibility, energy savings, land acquisition, as the project can require additional land for some reason, and reliability. And what that means really is it's considering the potential challenges which could delay the project, and you've got your project scheduled goal and the desire to get this done in a timely fashion to save money and move on. This table is a summary of the comparative qualitative rankings. The recycled water alternatives, it's not including your no project alternative because it wouldn't really rank on this table, were ranked from one to four for each criteria, and one is the least favorable. So based on these criteria, we're seeing alternatives three and four, or the indirect potable reuse alternative is ranking the highest, and agricultural exchange is ranking So I want to walk through some of the major conclusions and recommendations. IPR provides the highest water supply benefit at 900 to 1,100 acre feet per year. Some optimization and some other work at the water treatment plant has the potential to really maximize this benefit, and the city could significantly reduce or eliminate reliance on imported water with this project. Least expensive alternative is your no recycled water project, alternative zero, followed by urban reuse, which was alternative one. But alternative one provides no water supply benefit to the city, and alternative one provides the least. Capital costs between the agricultural exchange alternative and the IPR alternative are similar. The IPR really has a significantly higher water supply benefit if a higher exchange rate can't be negotiated with the agricultural users. And again, that agricultural exchange really relies on successful contracts and negotiations, which adds to uncertainty for the project. So based on these criteria, the community project goals for the project, the master water reclamation plan recommends the recycled water project of indirect potable reuse. It best fulfills the council's adopted community project goals, provides the highest, most reliable potential water supply benefit of the alternatives that were assessed, could potentially allow the city to reduce or eliminate reliance on recycled water. And if a recycled water project is desired, there's potential for significant savings if this project is implemented with the wharf. Recommending next steps related to reclamation. The sewer rate study update, which is currently underway and anticipated to be completed in April next month. The draft EIR is estimated to be completed in August. And then we want to continue doing some consultation with the water board, perform some citing studies for injection wells. A pilot study for injection extraction is recommended to really refine those preliminary assessments and estimates of potential benefit. And then the final EIR is anticipated to be adopted and, or finalized in autumn of Once that pilot study is performed, the study's recommended doing some groundwater modeling update to incorporate results of those pilot studies. We recommend that the water treatment plan, or the water treatment plant, I'm sorry, the one water plan, perform a water treatment plant optimization study. There's some losses as the water runs through that water treatment facility that could be reduced by some optimizations, some simple things that they can do to improve recovery and production of the water. And then finally, you'd have your design, the design of your recycled water system, which includes the advanced treatment, injection wells, pumps, and pipelines. That's all I have. So I'll open that up to any questions or comments you might have, we'll do our best to answer them.
Great, thanks for the report. We will start with questions from council, and then we've got some speaker slips for public comments. So let's start with public comment questions. And look to my right, Marla, do you want to start us off on questions?
All right. Well, thank you. That's a lot of information to digest. And of course, we had the big book, too, to look at, so we tried to get through it.
If I could interrupt real quick, I did want to point out, too, we're going to be preparing a similar set of executive summaries and a two-page summary, so we're working on those this week. We wanted, it was most important to get the document out, be ready for the presentation today, prepare for the presentations and work we'll be doing in April, but we'll have that out, say, around a week, something like that. We should have those posted online for everybody.
That's good news, because I know there's a lot of people out there in the public that are concerned with seeing it and reading it and digesting it. Let me start by asking you, how confident are you that we will really be able to successfully execute on either alternative three or four and meet all applicable water quality standards? And I say that because there's, in the report itself, there's maize and mites, and it sounds like there's more testing, and you talked about some of the more testing that needs to be done to confirm these findings. So I'm just really asking at this point approximately how confident you are.
So I'll tackle that one. I would say, based on the work that GSI Water did, and based on our working closely with Black and Beach through the facility master plan process, the estimates we developed, I'd say we have a very high confidence level in the budget we have right now. The contingencies are there to reflect what we don't know, we don't know yet. At this point, the goal of pilot testing and field testing is to confirm the consumptions that we made in the groundwater bottling work, and to identify, is it three wells or four wells or two wells? And how deep are they, what diameter, how much can we inject in each one? But we feel very confident in the work that's been performed so far. The nice thing about this aquifer is we have several existing wells, and when you have a lot of, and the ability to do pumping tests and that sort of thing with those existing wells, we know a lot about this aquifer. And there've been many studies there over the years, you know, with some of the old cleanup work, and so there's just a lot of information there. Hydrogeologists, I'm not a hydrogeologist, but I'll speak for them, they often don't have the quality of information that we have in Moro Valley.
Okay. And so are the costs associated with these additional tests, are they included in this cost estimate?
Yes.
Okay. And the demolition cost for the existing wastewater treatment plant, is the amount that's included in here just Moro Bay's share? Is this going to be shared with Cayucus?
No, ma'am. That's just Moro Bay's share, and so they'll have their own proportion of that that they pay.
Okay. And I was noting in your cost assumptions that sometimes you have been relying on the SBR option and other times on the MBR option, and we have not made a decision yet which way we're going. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. The treatment technology has not been specifically selected. It might be done through the design bill procurement process, and once we get, we speak with design bill teams. In the cost estimates here, the only switching of that should be when looking at, just the cost for the no recycled water project was based on an assumed SBR treatment technology. All of the recycled water options assumed the MBR cost, and the reason why they're different is you wouldn't do a secondary wastewater treatment facility or wastewater treatment facility to meet secondary requirements using an MBR. That's going to get you most of your way to tertiary with the only addition needed being disinfection.
Okay.
So that's why they're different.
So is MBR necessary for the options that you're recommending?
There's other treatment technologies that meet tertiary disinfected recycled water criteria. I don't know if you wanted to pile on to that, Mike.
Yeah, I'll pile on to that one. So the MBR is comparable to the SBR followed by membrane filtration. So both of those met all of the community goals for, quote, "reclamation-ready" facility, meaning tertiary treatment with, or filtration with disinfection and capable to deliver recycled water.
Okay. And would construction of the two facilities occur simultaneously?
They could. I would say you would definitely want the planning and design to cover Phase One and, and the advanced water treatment facility. Part of, you know, the work that gets done on the wharf site, it's most efficient if that happens together.
And the pipelines, really, depending on where they go. You want to do those together if you can.
I see. Okay, so they probably would have to go together. And I was looking at, and this is on page, I think it's 726 in the report, and if we look at the total anticipated annual cost here is shown as $3.1 million. This is for alternative four. And if you just divide that by the estimated water supply benefit, you end up with $2,770 per acre foot.
Sounds about right.
Is that about right? And so that is more expensive than state water?
That's correct. The way we would look at it is that is more expensive than state water, but one of the things, one of the things that needs to be reflected in that consideration of the overall rate increase is that cost is more expensive than state water, but it would reduce, it would be, you'd have a higher cost on the sewer side, but it would reduce your cost on the water side because you wouldn't need to take as much state water. But that's correct. It's not less expensive than state water.
Right. But when you're talking about this anticipated annual cost, does that, that's just for the water part, correct? The water reclamation part, it is not for the sewer part?
That's annual cost, that's described for a specific alternative, and I'm sorry, my report isn't...
It's alternative four, so it's one of the preferred alternatives, which is why I'm focusing on it.
That's the total annual cost from going from alternative zero to alternative four. In other words, to have the full water recycling opportunity.
So it includes part of the cost of constructing the wastewater treatment plant?
No.
No, just the water reclamation facility.
Yeah, just the recycled water component.
Right. I just wanted to confirm that.
If I could, based on our good discussion yesterday, thought through those numbers a little bit further. So yes, looking strictly at that table, the cost of recycled water is $2,770 an acre foot, and our current cost of state water is $2,200 an acre foot. So let's pencil that out, though, for a moment. So it's costing us $570 an acre foot more in order to have water independence and be separate from state water. If you take that $570 an acre foot, multiply it by our annual usage right there, which is 1,119, it costs us $637,000 a year for water independence. If you divide that by 12 months, and this is rough, but by 5,500 users, it costs us nine, it costs a user $9, $9.66 a month for us to put in the full water recycling effort. So really, that's the measure, putting it down to, and we need to adjust those numbers a little bit, but I would actually hazard to say, based on water usage, it's going to be a little bit under $900, $9 a month for your regular user, and for high users, it's going to be more. So what is that $9.66 a month purchase, purchases water independence? And that means a couple of things. One, it means that we have local control of our entire water supply, and we're not reliant on the state. It mitigates any risk of a failure of the state to be able to deliver water, either due to a natural disaster, an earthquake in the central valley that cuts up the state water system, or significant maintenance issues. And finally, and perhaps most importantly, it effectively controls our costs. We have no way to manage state water costs. It is, we believe it's likely state water costs will increase over the next 30 to 60 years with twin tunnels underneath the delta and Orville Dam spillway improvements, those sort of things, that there's significant maintenance of the state water system. And then the one other thing to consider is that, as you're considering all of this and providing direction, is that that $3100 a year, I'm sorry, $3,100,000 a year includes all of the capital costs and amortized over 30 years. This project is a 60-year project. So once you get to the 30-year point, all of those capital costs that are part of that $3.1 million a year are paid off, so to speak, and then you just have the operations and maintenance costs.
Okay. And are the operating and maintenance costs, assuming that we are going to have some solar array there, so that we are going to be saving on power and...
We haven't. We wanted to present the most conservative version, so we have not done that.
So we could be saving more money. This is the absolute maximum that we would be, in a sense.
Yeah. Another area that we talked about, too, in the presentation briefly, was water plant optimization. You know, the way the plant's currently operated, there are things you can do with blending at the plant and different scale inhibitors, that, things that are relatively inexpensive that can improve the rec... that, things that are relatively inexpensive, that can improve the recovery at the Brackishwater RO plant. So those aren't reflected in here right now either. But we wanted to present the, you know, I wouldn't say, you know, a conservative, a conservative estimate.
Okay. And my last question. Should the state in the near future decide to actually regulate direct potable reuse? Is that an option for us with this plant so that we could convert to that if we chose to?
It's a little speculative, Mike.
Okay.
Actually, Rob and I had a discussion about that today. It depends on what the near future is. So Rob attended a, a state water recycling conference last week in San Diego. And the feel in the room there is, well, Rob, why don't you tell us what the feel in the room there is?
The feel in the room there was, direct potable is going to move much faster through the process than perhaps the division of drinking water wants it to. They're being very conservative with the regulations, yet there are many water agencies that are providing a high level of treated water that they feel shouldn't go into this environmental buffer, into dirty groundwater, only to be extracted again and have to be reclaimed. It's a significant cost to do that. One of the little giveaways at the conference was a, a bottle of reclaimed water that they provided for us, for drinking water there. It's groundwater replenishment system out of Orange County. It's the first commercial bottling of reclaimed water. Just as another aside, we had the opportunity to taste a little reclaimed water there too. Stone Brewing, Brewing is, their water is coming from San Diego Pure Water. Because it's, in brewing beer, it's important to have consistent quality in your water. And they can rely upon that water to be perfectly consistent every gallon that comes to them from San Diego Pure Water.
So it's, it's possible that, I guess I would state it this way, we will and are keep a very close eye on the development of the state water regulations. Rob described a tension between the division of drinking water and the rest of California, nearly. And, and if, if the situation changes, then what I think we can be sure of is that we will have to have treated our wastewater at least to the level that we are planning to for IPR in order for it to go to DPR, direct potable reuse. So there, we, we would not be overbuilding a, a water reclamation facility by doing MBR and UV disinfection and reverse osmosis. And the one other step I always forget, that one.
The oxidation.
That one. We would not be, if we build that, which is what Alternative Three and Four say, we would need to be doing at least that for, to meet DPR regulations that may be emerging.
Okay. Thank you. That's all my questions.
Yeah.
John?
Thanks.
Thank you for your presentation. Appreciate it. I had sent these questions earlier, but I, I apologize, I didn't get a response, so I'm going to ask them publicly at this time. Could you, whoever on the team wants to do it, could, could you elaborate for us the operating cost variance between the current plant operational costs and Alternative Number Three and/or Four?
So I'm going to pull up the operating costs for those alternatives. And I think Mike has some information.
Can I, I'll jump on this. But the, the estimates, you know, per, per the study?
Am I doing that?
Going back and looking, going back and looking at the, at the rate study, I think the estimate for this year was, was that wastewater plant staffing and operations was around 1.7 million, something like that. Not including capital costs like MMRP, the major maintenance and repair program. Rob, if that seems reasonable?
Yeah, that's about right.
So, and then the, the estimated O and M costs for Alternatives Three and Four, annual O and M, and this is for just the recycled water components, not the Wharf, which I could pull up in the, actually, I have the total O and M costs in the presentation for the Wharf and recycled water.
And I'm just talking about the W, wastewater treatment facility operating cost, because that's all we can compare to right now.
Just the wastewater treatment facility?
Right. I'm just trying to get a sense of-
Okay. Let me pencil that out real quick.
So the, the annual O and M, and Eileen, I'm going to, we, we had about 2.3 million is what we had, would estimate in the future for the indirect potable reuse. That's combined total annual O and M.
That's with the recycled water, which the recycled water component, let's see.
Trying to find out efficiencies just on the wastewater treatment side from a staffing and operations standpoint.
The recycled water component of that is around half a million dollars. I think it was estimated between 0.5 and 0.7, half a million to almost three quarters of a million dollars. So if you take that, 2.3-
Pretty comparable without the recycled water.
Okay. Could, could you identify me, for me and the community, the total added costs for moving from the Rigetti site to the proposed site on South Bay Boulevard? In other words, not building the plant there versus building the plant there at the other side, and, and not the cost of land, because I think that's a minor piece of it. But, but just looking at all that piping and that you had on there, what are the total, what's the total added cost from moving that site?
So the, the cost that, going back and looking at those siting studies we did last May, which those overall numbers are still pretty close to what, where Black and Beach wound up in facility master plan. Terms of, of capital cost, it's, you know, in the range of six to eight million, something like that. So additional pipeline to, to get over to South Bay Boulevard versus Rigetti. Really, the difference is pipeline length. So in that neighborhood, six to eight million construction cost. If you add contingencies and all those factors and things on to there, we wound up at, you know, eight to 14, somewhere in that neighborhood.
Yeah. So 14 million?
At the high end.
So, so that would be from the, using Rob's numbers, just, and I know that's a rough estimate, moving that site will cost the rate payer about $14 a month? You said a-
Yeah, about a million, a dollar per-
A dollar a million, basically? And, okay, that, that's, then on-
I'm actually picking through some of my papers.
Sure.
We had that number in a presentation we did. I want to say we came up with eight to $13, somewhere in that neighborhood was what we had, you know, sent out to the public.
Well, if it's 14 million, using Rob's numbers, it's 14 bucks, but yeah.
Right.
Okay. I'm just trying to get a sense of what the movement to that site costs and let the community understand what that decision has on them in terms of impact. So, and then on page 7-26, you indicate the estimated total annual O and M costs for Alternative Four are 1.6, 1.1, almost 1.7 million. So I'm assuming this is in addition to the costs that I asked about in the previous question. So I think Marla's asked the same question. And the combined costs of the two then come out to be about $2,700, $2,800 an acre foot for water. That's what I'm getting in my addition. So, okay, cool. So, in your cost assumption, you assume project funding costs of 3% based upon an SRF loan amortized over 30 years? Would you anticipate, since this funding has dried up, that the cost of money from USDA will be approximately the same? Because I think you stated that there's no more state money available, that we're going to probably have to use USDA. And, and do we know what our current rates are there?
I'll jump on that. So the first, first of all, the, what is dried up is the grant money from the 2016 Prop One grant. When Mike and I visited the State Water Board in Sacramento in January, they did not say that the SRF money, the state revolving fund money was dried up. What they did say is that it is not nearly as robust as it used to be. There is still money for projects. They were careful not to say that, that we could count on it. But they also very clearly said, this is a pretty good project, a very good project, and the kind that we would want to support. And then they suggested that we also look at alternatives. So, so I would not say that the SRF, state SRF is dried up. It is just, what they have to balance is how much is going out the door when, and then how much is coming back in the door each year as people pay off their loans. The first next alternative is likely not USDA, but a WFILO loan from the EPA, federal EPA.
And do you know the interest rate for that?
And, and both of those, we believe that 3% is the high end for both of those. And, and so as, as Mike has said before, we've all sort of said, the, the numbers that we're providing, we try to be very careful and conservative so that we're estimating sort of the worst case. In talking with the Ferguson Group last week and meeting with them in Washington, the, you know, if, if we had an SRF, excuse me, a WFILO loan, we might be able to get that at 2.75, and then they might be able to get that reduced to 2.5 or 2 and 1/4 over, over a period of time. So I would, I would say that 3% is a good conservative estimate, and it could be a little better.
Good. And do you, do you know if those rates move with the Fed's increase in interest rates, which are coming again this year two more times? Would you happen to know how that tracks?
I can speak to SRF, the SRF program. It tracks as half of the state's general obligation bond. So where those bonds go, then SRF follows.
Okay. Great. Thank you. So what's the, the financial benefit of not utilizing state water allocation? What, what's, I mean, that, that seems to me to be one of the bottom line questions. I mean, what is the financial benefit to the city? And is there a market for our unused allocation? And if so, what's the arbitrage value for that market if there is an arbitrage value?
I'll speak to the, the sale of state water. There really is no arbitrage value for it. DWR sets the price that state water can be sold. They're not looking for their member contractors to buy, buy state water and sell it at a higher cost. The, the other thing that really can't be recovered through sale of state water are those sunk costs for payment of capital facilities. So it's really the variable cost. Probably the, the value to sell state water is about $200 an acre foot, is what, if we were to sell state water today to another member agency, that's what we could get for it. We pay about, depending how much we use, because there's a high fixed cost, we pay about $2,200 an acre foot. We could sell it for $200 an acre foot. I think the value is not so much in the, the economics, it's more in the liability resiliency. So up until this year, our allocation was much less than our demand. And the only thing that made up for it is water and storage in San Luis Reservoir. San Luis Reservoir spilled this year because of the rain. When San Luis Reservoir spills, it's a paper spill. Nothing really spilt out of it. It's, it's a math problem. The, everybody's stored water sets, resets to zero. So we have zero water in storage per our contract with the San Luis County Flood Control District and their contract with DWR. So we went from almost 3,000 acre feet in storage to zero this year. And we knew that was going to happen at some time in the future. We just didn't, didn't know when. So we have zero water in storage. So we have no money in the bank as far as water goes. And we're operating off of our annual allocation. So perhaps there is not a huge financial windfall of having local water supply. It's more of a resiliency and a guaranteed water supply availability.
Rob, could you remind us of the percent allocation of our acre feet of state water that we had the last two or three years before this year?
Yeah. Last year, it was a 5% of our allocation. This year is the first year in, I think, seven years where we, if, we have a drought buffer. So if we exceed 35%, we get 100% of our water. Another crazy mathematical formula that the state came up with. But anyway, this is the first year in seven years where we were actually able to get more than our 100% of water. We'll never get more than 100% of our water. So-
Importantly, last year and the six previous years, although our allocation of state water is 1,200 acre feet-ish.
1313.
1313, thank you.
We multiplied it times 5%, and that was our allocation. And we were living off of water stored in the San Luis Reservoir Bank to make up that difference.
So for, so for six years, we were operating with the state only allowing us to take somewhere between 5 and probably 15, 20% of the allocation, the 1,300 acre foot allocation. And the rest of the time, we were drawing down from our storage. So if the drought had continued, we could have got to a concerning point?
Yes. And really, the thing that, I'll have to applaud the community. The thing that really made the difference was the community stepping up the water conservation.
So I guess my last question is this. If, if you look out 30 or 60 years, which is sometimes very hard to do when you're my age, but just thinking about that, looking out 30 years from now, when the, the sunk costs of this project are paid for in essence, at the end of the day, water independence with regard to the city in 30 to 60 years, and even maybe in the short term, does a couple of things. Tell me if I'm correct in my thinking. One, it ensures us of a supply of water, no matter what the state does?
Yes.
And secondarily, down the line, given the unknown value of, or we won't even call it a value, but cost of infrastructure for the state water project, changes that will occur, upgrades, let's call it, they could be extremely significant and markedly exceed the current price of state water. Is that what you're hearing?
That's what I'm hearing. You know, especially with the twin, I mean, some people say the twin tunnels will never be built, but it's a multi-tens of billions of dollar project. Now it's spread over all the state water, will be spread out all of, all over the state water contractors. But still, it'll have a significant cost to state water.
And the advantage then of water independence is that we're not bearing that cost and passing it to the rate payer.
Correct.
Correct? And the last piece that I see as, as a value-added proposition is in 30 years, when the infrastructure is paid off, the rates go down.
Yes.
Because it, you only pay for the cost of the service.
Yes.
So I know that's long-term thinking, but that has a significant advantage to the community if you amortize it and think about it over 60 years or after 30 years.
I think, I think, I'll have to say this. I've never seen rates go down. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, there's usually another project that will.
They may not rise.
They may not rise.
Significantly higher rates than they are rising now.
Correct. But unfortunately, I've never seen, once the facilities are paid off, them go down.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, John. Matt?
Yeah. I have a couple of questions. John, what is the advantage in terms of the IPR, east or west? Looking at where those would be located, is there a benefit to one or the other? And I guess then the caveat next to that is, could there be a hybrid of the two? Or are they just mutually exclusive?
There could certainly be a hybrid. The caveat there is you would need to have a highway crossing. And so, the one advantage of going on the east side is you don't have to cross the highway, but then you have private easements that you have to negotiate. There's a lot of, I think one has a slightly shorter pipeline length overall, and the other one has some perhaps more difficult siting considerations for the injection wells, but we'd have to run through that siting study to really say for sure.
And also worth noting that that's a kind of question that could be explored in the EIR, whether there's any substantial difference in environmental impacts from location or pipeline extension, or just cultural resources, or whatever it might be. So, we haven't gotten to that point, but it's something we're looking at.
Okay, yeah, that makes me think, in terms of the EIR, we'd have to choose one of those choices, choice three or four, and then do that section of the EIR for that well?
Not exactly, no. I think we're doing, you know, the way we conceive of the EIR, which is underway right now, it has a number of components we're looking at as the project. The site of the facility itself, pipeline alignments, what we do with the water, where the fields for injection might be, those are all considerations in either the project description or different alternatives, and we have to consider all of it.
Okay, and then my last question. In terms of the capital cost with the ag exchange, if, as you, in terms of your grid, looking at the better choices, three and four being the best, and knowing that we would have to with the different technology for three and four, is it possible to, would the engineering on those choices, three and four, be suitable that putting some sort of like, because I know in terms of the ag world, we're going to need to have some sort of reverse osmosis component? Would that be part of those items, three and four? Would it be too pricey to include in that, or is that just apples and oranges?
So, the alternatives, three and four, were the indirect potable reuse, the agricultural exchange, which was option two, alternative two, that one did include some reverse osmosis cost, remove some salt. That was included in that capital cost.
So, I guess the point of my question was, if we did, understanding the grid that you've given us, saying three and four in terms of IPR being, in the long term, better for us than ag reuse, but knowing that down the road, we could be, if we do sell some of our water back to some of these ag contingencies, and that a lot of them, especially the avocado farmers, are going to want water treated at reverse osmosis, is that something that we can do later or, and provide in terms of the facility of the plant? Or we would leave it open to be able to do that later?
You would be, for the indirect potable reuse, you'd be using reverse osmosis on 100% of that flow. So, that would be a level of quality that would be considerably higher. So, they would probably be really excited about it, is what I would say. It would allow you to do either.
Got it. Okay, that's what I wanted. Okay, thank you. That's my question.
Brad?
If we become water independent, how do we deal with the state when we tell them that we don't want their water?
So, our contract is actually with the San Luis Obso County Flood Control and Water Conservation District for our, we're a subcontractor for state water. We have an agreement with them that says the first opener on state water quantity cost discussions will happen once the local facilities' bonds are paid off, which is 2021. Coincidentally, the timeframe when we're looking at having this done. So, that would be our point of negotiation, not with the state of California, with the Flood Control District. The Flood Control District, Flood Control and Water Conservation District, has had inquiries from other communities within the county on being able to use state water. There's just, there's a capacity. We all bought into state water way back in the 90s. They built a treatment plant that provided that much state water and a pipeline that would deliver it to San Luis and Santa Barbara Counties. They didn't make it bigger so somebody else could come on and buy into it. So, there's kind of a fixed capacity to it. Anybody else that wants to get into it, another community has to either sell or give up some of their allocation. I think it's a matter of, my preliminary discussions with the county, it's more of a matter of, we stop paying for state water would be one way to do it. Another way to do it would be to, we wouldn't, it would be less financial, but it'll offer us more flexibility, would be to release a certain portion of our state water for a certain amount of time, but we could get it back if we wanted to at the end of that time period. So, basically, lease that right to, or that allocation to another community. Those discussions will be ongoing, probably over the next few years as we move closer. This is new territory for the county. Nobody ever anticipated anybody wanting to come off of the project, because it was, in the 90s, I remember, this was the uninterruptible, everlasting water from the north that was going to save the community. At least that's the way we talked about it. I was working for the City of San Luis Obso at the time. When we were trying to get on the state water, that's the way we were talking about it. It was, it was almost unlimited water from the north. Now, we found out that is not the case because of the issues with getting water through the delta and its impact to existing species and drought greatly affects the amount of water that is available.
Rob, based on your knowledge of the other communities in the Flood Control and Water Conservation District, is it likely that there are other communities that would like to have our allocation?
There's one community in the Five Cities area that would love to have our allocation. They just.
So, you're, so it is likely that we wouldn't have any trouble getting off state water?
No.
It would be a negotiation, but your sense is that would not be a challenge?
Correct. And the reason it's not very much of a challenge is, the capital facilities are paid off at that, in 2021, and we can, we've paid for the Choro Valley Pipeline, or our section of the Choro Valley Pipeline at that point.
So, if we get off state water and our allocation goes to somebody else, what happens if we want to get back on? Can we get our water back?
That, it depends how we get off of state water. If we stop using it and allow it to be allocated to somebody else, and it's a permanent transfer, there's only so much water in the bucket. We can't get it back. If it's more of a leased arrangement, where it's probably not as financially advantageous to us, we could get that water back over, at some point in time.
If we leased it, though, would we then be liable for the new capital costs for the delta tunnels?
I don't know the answer to that question. Somebody will be, all the contractors will be liable for those, all the state water costs. It's like a giant water utility. It's paid for by the users. All the costs are paid by the users.
Okay, so it sounds as if the only way we can avoid those future capital costs is to divorce ourselves from state water. Is that your opinion?
Likely. That is likely. Like I said, this is new territory. Everybody wanted to get on state water. Nobody's really wanted to get off of state water as of yet.
On page 8-1, it says, this is the financing plan, it should be noted that implementing the recommended project would result in an estimated reduction of XX dollars in state water project costs, assuming supplemental water supply is able to provide redundancy. So, I'm starting to get the feeling that that XXX really is a zero. Is that correct?
No, the point there is, you're, you would, you would reduce your, it would reduce your costs on the water side to take, you know, in this case, either all or most of your state water. So, it would be, the numbers I think we had come up with, you know, I think the number Dave was using was somewhere around 600,000 a year, something like that, reduction to your water costs. So, that's a cost you would see, that's a reduction in cost on the water side you would see from implementing this wastewater project.
But that would be more than offset by the increase in costs of amortizing the capital costs of constructing the work?
Yes.
So, there is no savings, really?
There's no overall savings.
Right, yeah. I guess that's what I'm going for.
And there's no overall savings in the first 30 years.
Okay, yeah.
Once the capital costs are paid off, after 30 years, the way we've amortized this, the cost of water drops by about $1,000 an acre foot, which is substantial. And then, not doing all the math I did before, but while there's no overall savings, it's likely about $9.60 per household per month in order to gain those facets of water independence that we've talked about, and that is controlling costs, mitigating risk, having local control of the supply.
Okay. Thanks. That's all.
Good questions. Thanks. Have a question about the injection wells. So, in the staff report, it identifies kind of a zone of where the injection wells would be located. What's going to be the challenge in land acquisitions and having the wells? How is that going to work as far as our project timeline? Is that factored into the costs that we're looking at right now? And so, that's my question.
Yes, it is. It's factored into the cost.
It's factored into the timeline.
Siting.
How do we factor that in? I mean, just looking at it, okay, there's a certain area, and we've got to figure out where those are going to go. It's going to be somebody else's property, I'm assuming, and we're going to have to work that out, whether it's eminent domain or however we work those things out. So, just trying to work through that.
Sure. So, what you've got in those facilities are, you know, three or four small wellheads, spread out, pipeline connecting them, buried pipeline? So, it's, you know, it, we've looked in areas in right-of-way, some of the streets, we've looked at some available land areas, but that'll be refined through this next phase of work.
Okay.
This goes a little bit to Matt's question, east or west benefits.
Right.
Generally, the east is mostly private property over there, miners, Silver City, those things. The west side is perhaps, there's more right-of-way, bike path, Lila Kaiser, Morbay Power Plant property, which, and some, so some of those things would be, it may be that west side is easier on the acquisition piece. And then, also, as Mike said, we shouldn't think of what's there as a big facility. It is, it's literally an underground pipeline with somewhere between probably three and five wellheads.
Okay. I just want to comment on the costs. So, we were saying that after 30 years with, once everything's paid off, the reduction in the cost of water would be reduced by, what, $1,000? Is that what you're saying? And so, in thinking through that, considering that we're revisiting right now, rebuilding a wastewater treatment plant, I would, I think it's fair to say that we shouldn't assume that everything's paid off and we're good to go. After 30 years, there's going to be some infrastructural, infrastructure expenses that we're going to have to face. You know, we shouldn't be painting that rosy a picture, at least from my standpoint. I don't see it that way, though it could be a positive one. I just, from a responsible standpoint, I would anticipate, we're going to be looking at infrastructural costs even 30 years out, and we'll be looking at that.
You'll have a repair and replacement program for a lot of the maintenance systems, but some of those one-time, a lot of those one-time costs at the start, concrete, earthwork, you know, roads, those sorts, those could, your initial costs are going to be a very high percentage of that plant. But you will have repair and replacement. Those will be built into your rights.
Yeah. Okay.
And that, just to interject briefly, that repair and replacement, or an estimate and allowance for that repair and replacement was included in these annual O and M costs.
Okay. And so, the water rate study that's undergoing right now is covering, we're basically looking at, giving us a menu of the options that we have right now. So, we're looking at options zero through four, and what that water rate study would be, we'd be looking at. Is that correct?
We're looking at the bookends, we're looking at the zero, the four, and then we're looking at financing alternatives, SRF, and then bond sales. So, we're looking at a range there.
Okay. Okay, I think there's people waiting for public comment, so I think we can get started with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks very much. We'll start off with Robert Walker. Thanks for waiting. Come on up. And then we have Cynthia Holly. Thanks. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Council. I first want to apologize for coming to the party very late. I'm a resident of Morbay for 21 years, and like most of us, heard about the problems that we have with our sewer system. I assumed that the professionals would take care of us. Somewhere along the line, and I'm not, I wished I'd have done a better job of recording it, I found some estimates of how much our bill is going to go up. And it ranges, is significantly higher than the numbers we've heard from here. It ranges from $180 to $230, does not include the recycle portion of the project. So, you know, I look at my budget, and I look at the budget around my friends, and I go like, wow. There are approximately 4,900 residential meters in our community. If you take that times 230 bucks a meter, you come up with over a million dollars a month taken out of the local economy. So, I am really concerned about cost, not for me just personally, but for the community. We hear stories about the impact of the costs over in Los Osos, where senior citizens are selling to the high bidders, properties are going to the more rich, and the makeup of the community is being changed. So, I just, I don't know how to say it any stronger. I am really concerned about costs. The situation reminds me very much of a project that I worked on when I was real young in my career. My boss gave me this job. I did a diligent looking at the alternatives, least cost analysis, and I was so proud that I found the right one. And we brought the client in. And he looked, and he kind of patted me on the back, being the young guy on, at the table, and he looked at me and says, I can't afford it. I'm like, wow. They never taught me that at school. You have to look at a budget when you come up with a solution. So, I'm saying right now, I, you know, I really appreciate all the energy that's being put in, but I don't hear much talking about the end. You know, we're going to add $9 here, and we're going to add this, and we're going to add that. Even with the figure of $1 per million, you're looking at 166 million. Even with the figure of $1 per million, you're looking at 166 million bucks, or you're 166 dollars per meter, you know? And then all those other things are going on. So again, I just want to repeat, I'm, we need to get as smart about finding how to economize as we are about finding a solution. And I hear the little thing over there, if you give me, appreciate, just one more second.
Going to have to ask you to wrap it up.
I got it, thank you. So I just feel like the snowball's going downhill, and I just don't know how to participate in a more productive way, but I really feel like things are a little out of control. Thank you.
Thanks, Robert. Cynthia Hawley, and then Meredith Bates.
Good evening, Cynthia Hawley, and I'm concerned about the process, or interested in process. In August of 2016, the proposed project was sent to the state clearinghouse in relation to SEQA for the notice of preparation, and the proposed project was to produce and beneficially reuse advanced-treated recycled water. So that project has already been selected, and so, and I don't know who selected it, and I would like to know, because now the city council is being asked to, tonight, determine that the staff is seeking direction from council regarding what, if any, recycled water options are to be included as part of the WRF project. Well, that's already been done. It's a done deal, and that's what the EIR is reviewing. So I'm really worried about that, and I also suggest that the staff, that the city does not make this decision tonight, because this meeting was billed and noticed as review, consider, and provide comments. This would be a very big decision to make tonight, and the Brown Act would prohibit it. So I hope you don't make that decision tonight. I'm also concerned because on the agenda for A9, the advisory committee consultant contract summary authorized expenditures of over 2.6 million dollars. I'm concerned because it sounds like the advisory committee has that authority to do that, and I don't know if they come to your meeting for approval or not, but they've also have, they also show contract, consultant contract expenditures to the tune of 1.9 already spent. And I'm also wondering, what's this being spent on? Because if it's being spent on this project, reused advanced treatment for recycled water, then that means that you're starting the project before the EIR is certified, and that's a major violation of the California Environmental Quality Act. So I'd like to understand that. And another thing is that reviewing all of the steps that have been taken and the steps that are going to be taken, I haven't seen anything about an application or an approval of a coastal development permit from the Coastal Commission. And the public, a public works project is in the Coastal Commission's original jurisdiction, which means you have to go to them for a permit. And I haven't seen that yet, so it's really, it's backwards to not be working on your permit, which is the project description. I mean, you've got a project description in the EIR now, the project description being the one that we're talking about selecting here tonight, which is the reused advanced-treated recycled water. But you haven't, it doesn't look like you've applied for a permit for that project yet. So everything seems kind of backwards to me procedurally, and it's really important because it could be a violation of the Coastal Act and a violation of the California Environmental Quality Act. Thanks.
Thank you, Cynthia. Meredith Bates?
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. My name is Meredith Bates. I'm a little tired by now, so I will try to make sense with what I have to say, and I appreciate all the work that has been done on this project. Seems like there's a lot of things that have gone into it, and a lot of people have taken their time to try to understand and study it, and I think that's marvelous. I want to go back to the points I made earlier when I spoke at public comment at the beginning of the meeting, to speak about conservation. I heard that mentioned once tonight, and it seems to be a very critical part of water scarcity issues, to conserve water. And it doesn't seem to be very popular discussion. The second thing is that I have heard so many terms tonight, my head is spinning. I heard about beer quality. I don't know what that had to do exactly with this. Heard, the first time I heard about twin tunnels. I thought at first you said the Twin Towers, and I was really confused. I've heard about the SMP, the LMNOP, the QRS, and again, my head is spinning. So I am asking the council to please have some kind of an informational meeting for the public, where the public, where we can ask, we can have a Q and A, we can ask our silly questions, our basic questions. I'm really glad we're going to have an executive summary. I'm looking forward to reading that. Hopefully, it'll be in a little bit more clear language, so I know what it's talking about. And I did my time on PWA. I studied a lot of this stuff, but I'm still very confused about a lot of the terminology. And I totally concur with the two earlier speakers, especially the gentleman who said he's coming a little bit late to the party. I'm getting kind of re-involved in city things that are going on, and I'm trying to get up to speed and catch up with what's been happening. It's very overwhelming. And to hear about water independence, and beer quality, and all these different things, it's, it needs to be synthesized. I'd like the public to have an opportunity to really have a Q and A with staff, maybe a council member. I'm hesitant to have the consultant at that type of meeting, because then we're paying more money to a consultant. That's my opinion, thank you.
Thank you, Meredith. Bob Keller?
Mayor, council members, my name is Bob Keller, a resident of Morro Bay. First of all, I don't like costs going up any more than any Morro Bay residents here in Morro Bay. But as I get older, I find that costs go up everywhere. It's like, the most important thing that we have to worry about is that we have needs and wants. The first priority is we need water and sewer, and the case in point is the WRF. It could be a great long-term investment if we plan this right. Wants is a secondary item, and most time, more costly than needs. I trust in our city council staff and leaders, for they are working in the best interests of Morro Bay, and have been working very hard on this project for a long time. It's important that the citizens need to get motivated and educated by attending as many meetings as possible until this project is completed. I'm in support of moving on with this WRF master plan, and I support the article written by our city manager in the latest Bay News newspaper. But anyway, I don't want to derail this WR project, because I think it could really increase our costs, because time is at the essence, time is cost. So I do support the master plan and trust our leaders, and also want to let everybody know that we don't have a permit to build any old facilities. We have to move on to a new site, because the Coastal Commission doesn't want on the beach. They want to move it to somewhere that is away from residents, schools, et cetera. But anyway, costs are important to everybody, and I hope we can get our costs in line, but remember, this is a long-term investment, and we should amortize this over many years. And also, we need to be independent of the state for our water supply, because we can't count on them to come through. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bob. That concludes the public comment speaker slips. I don't have any more speaker slips. Is there anybody else for public comment? None? I'll close public comment and bring it back to council. Just wondering if we can respond to a couple of the public comments. I know Mr. Walker was referring to $230 cost, and just want to see if we can address some of those questions that were come up, and so I'm looking to Rob, or Mike, or John, or anything like that.
Sure, I'll give it a shot.
Then there's a list of others that came up, so I have.
Yeah, I think everybody will have a chance to answer some.
Yeah, I feel we need to address those, thanks.
We have an existing rate structure in place that will escalate at the end of the five years to $89 a month. That covered about a $72 million project cost. So it's kind of sunk into the rates. What we need to do is, say it is 166 and a half million dollar project, we need to fund that delta between the 72 million dollars and the 166 and a half, which is 90, I think I said this earlier, 94 and a half million dollars. If you use the fairly conservative amount of $1 per million gallons, that's another 94 and a half, added on to 89, a total water rate, or excuse me, sewer rate.
Added to 79.
Added to 79. Of, now I'm going to do math in my head. Yeah.
174.
174 a month.
I'm sorry.
79 and, yeah, yeah.
Important note, and that is for full water recycling. I think the gentleman, questioner, said that did not include any water recycling. That's the.
That's everything.
For alternative three or four full water recycling.
Okay. I just, can we just make sure we cover all the questions first? So we have, we had Cynthia Hawley come up, and she was asking about SEQA and how, did you get all those questions there, John?
Yeah, I got all those questions.
Application, project description, advisory board approving costs, yeah, just want to, just want to.
Yeah, I think there's a little story to tell, just to make sure it's clear about where we are in the SEQA and permitting process. It is true that a notice of preparation was sent out in August 2016, which is basically the notice that an EIR will be prepared on a project. And that's all it is. It says, here's what we intend to study. The end result of that study will be a document that informs you about, and that'll be the EIR, about what could happen if you did that project. It's not an approval of the project, it doesn't imply an approval of the project, nor has any project been approved. There's no decision being made tonight. But what that does is say, this is what we intend to study. You also study alternatives to that project. So it's really the beginning of a SEQA process. There's a question that said, we need to approve a coastal development permit, that's also true. We haven't done that yet, we haven't, we're not in a position to do that yet. You can't even start that process, really, until we have close to a draft EIR or a draft EIR. So we understand, basically, what the impacts might be, but you can't actually go through the permitting process till you have a final EIR and have a project that you have approved. Conceptually, the process plays out as you get to the final EIR, which has the benefit of all the public input, on a project that you are considering doing, which is all you're at right now, and at that point, you make the decision, okay, we want to do this project or that project, based on what the EIR has told us, plus all the public input to that end. Once you do that, then you can get a permit to do that project, or permit, a coastal development permit. That's how it plays out. So we expect the draft EIR to be out in August, final EIR to be certified later in the fall, and then you're in a position to have the permitting process play out into early 2018. That's my best guess how that plays. Tonight, we're just really here to tell you what the master reclamation plan suggests for alternatives, and we go from there.
And Mr. Mayor, may I just add regarding the SEQA discussion? It'd be really unfortunate if the city had started with a project description of not including all the possibilities, because if you did that, and you did an EIR that didn't include all the possibilities, and you came up with something else you wanted to do, like you wanted to do the water reclamation, but you hadn't studied it, you'd have to go back to square one and restart the EIR process. So it's not unusual for an EIR to describe a larger project that you may approve, but you now have the option of being able to approve it or not approve it.
And there was one other project, one other question, too, about contract expenditures, consultant contract expenditures having already happened, even though there's not an approved project, that being a violation of SEQA. Well, the idea being, there's a lot of phases in consulting contracts that we're doing, for example, that are planning toward a project, but we don't have the approved project that comes out of the SEQA process. So it's just, it needs to be clarified how the process plays out.
Okay, thanks for that. Red, you had some questions?
Yeah, I wanted to go back to the monthly rate. Rob, going from $89 per month and adding the $94, that takes us up to $183 per month, but that is for sewer only, is that correct?
That is correct.
And the monthly bill that we receive from the city includes water usage, so if I use six units of water, how much does that add to the $183?
I don't have the sewer, the water rate structure memorized, so it's $23 plus, it would add to it. So maybe it's $40 a month? It would, it would add to that sewer rate.
Okay, and the reason I'm saying this is that I don't want to mislead anyone that at the end of a 218 vote, your monthly bill is only going to be $183. It is going to be 183 plus what you pay for water usage, which may well be in excess of $200. So I just, I don't want to lead anybody down a false trail on that, but thanks.
And if I could just also note that we were doing some rough estimates on those water rates. What we should really rely on is the water rate study that's going on right now. I just don't want to mislead anybody that it's 184 either. And so, as Rob said, you know, that's a fairly conservative multiplier of a dollar a month, a million dollars, but we should be careful about that. There was, Mr. Mayor, there's one other question about informational meetings, would you like us to cover that?
Yes, please.
So there's a great question about Q and As and informational meetings. So over the, over the last 18 months, I think we've had seven or eight sort of open-mic informational meetings and forums of various stripes, normally in this room or in the community center. Some had a presentation, some just had tables where folks could come and interact. Every one of them had an opportunity for members of the public to come, not under public comment, but to bring questions and have, and engage, engage staff in the project. We have one of those scheduled for June 4th and 5th, so Sunday afternoon, June the 4th, from 4:30 to 6:30 in this room, and then Monday evening, June the 5th, from 6:30 to 8:30. There is a four-page project update flyer that is in final draft form. It'll go in the mail on the 7th of April to every household in Morro Bay. It summarizes where we've come over the past year. This will be a great document to bring folks up to speed. It summarizes where we've come in the last 12 months since you made a site selection decision in June of 2016. And on that flyer, it includes those dates that I just gave for the, for the next informational forum. Also, other opportunities to engage, the sewer rate study that we just described is in, it's not in final draft form right yet, but they're working hard on it, and three of our advisory boards will, will receive that either in draft form or in final form in April. The Water Reclamation Facility Citizens Advisory Committee, the Citizens Finance Advisory Committee, and the Public Works Advisory Board. At their regularly scheduled meetings in April, this will be one of the topics that they look at, the water rate study, and then you will have the opportunity as a city council to dig into that water rate. study at your meeting on the 25th of April. So, so opportunities to engage further, learn more. The first one is, is the website where, under Hot Topics, the top link, all of these, all these discussions are summarized there and documents are linked there. And then during those three advisory board meetings, in the next, starting in about a week and a half with the WRFAC, opportunities to engage there at the city council meeting on the 25th of April, and then the, the public Q and A sessions in this room on June 4th and 5th.
And also worth noting that those June 4th and 5th meetings are really identical meetings and deliberately scheduled, one on a weekend, one on a weekday, so the community can come out. If they can't come to one, they come to the other, but it's the same kind of meeting.
And those, we just, those will, I think we've made it clear, but not this sort of a format where, you know, but there'll be informational tables, you can come learn about, about IPR and, and MBR and all of those things, and then there'll be a, essentially an open-mic Q and A period as part of that, as part of that forum.
Can I just ask a follow-up question?
Yep.
And those dates, June 4 and June 5, how is, how does that relate to the Prop 218 process?
On April 25th is when the council will, will first consider the Prop, the water rate study.
Right.
And the Prop 218 process. Your first meeting in May, which is May the 11th, 10th, 11th, right in there, 9th, on, so on May the 9th, the council will make a determination on whether to, to direct the staff to mail the Prop 218 notices. And that's, that's early May is when you'll make that decision. And then we timed this about three weeks after folks, two or three weeks after people receive those notices in the mail, we'll have these public information sessions so they can come and ask questions.
So they will have received the information at that point?
They will have.
Okay, thank you.
With a couple of weeks to digest it and communicate, and then to come do an informational forum.
Thanks.
Matt?
Yes, I'm not sure who to direct this to. In terms of this next, in budget rate study, what is the timeframe for this coming up in terms of this Prop 218 vote, in terms of that?
So the rate study, we'll, we'll be bringing the rate study to the various advisory boards starting next week. And so that rate study will be, be released in draft form, you know, in, in advance of, of, of course, of all that.
Okay, and this is for this next vote? And the last rate study we did, was that two years ago? That was two years ago. And before that, two years, when was the last rate study done?
Twenty years.
Twenty years before that.
So in terms of the timeliness of it, we go 20 years, two years, two years, but we're also trying to preempt and kind of guess and combine these different rate structures for the next 30 years, and this is, this is why we're doing this. And so when people talk about their rates going up and understanding that, we need to have the history going, looking back to look forward. Is that, am I on the right track here?
So, so we need a rate that would support a repayment of a loan, and that rate needs to basically finance the project. So we have a new project description, a new cost, so to move forward through the SRF process, we need to have a rate that would basically repay that loan. What council does is sets maximum rates. So as the project may change over time, you don't, if it changed in the future to something that costs less through grants or other financing strategies, you don't, the council does not have to implement the maximum rate that is set through the Prop 218 process. But just to, the maximum length of time a rate study is good for is five years, and then you need to either keep that rate, that last rate, from now until forever, or as the city Morro Bay did, for 20-plus years, or look at it again at the end of that five-year period. Does it still make sense? Are you accomplishing all your goals with capital replacement and O and M? So.
And so by, by doing this new rate structure, trying to combine the wastewater reclamation site and reclaiming water within two years, that proactivity is really trying to preempt these prices and these costs skyrocketing, correct?
I think that it does have that effect, but the, the driver for doing it now is based on a new project cost and be able to prove to the lending agencies that we have the ability to repay a loan.
Okay, I understand, and thank you for that clarity. But in terms of looking at the water rates that we didn't raise for the, prior to two years ago, for 20 years, what did we find happening to our, our funds for wastewater treatment plant and water?
So on the water side, we were, at the last year before the increase, we were pulling $900,000 out of our accumulation fund to pay operational costs. So we were basically robbing our capital improvement fund to pay ongoing operations because our rates were not covering costs.
Okay, no, that makes sense in terms of, we were robbing Peter to pay Paul, and people really didn't pay too much attention to that. We brought that, council has in the past few years, and now we're trying to do that same thing, but being proactive, looking ahead.
Yes.
How you'd say it?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think the last decision was to bring rates at, at least on a five-year basis back to council.
Got it, okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Matt. John?
Thank you for a robust discussion, everybody, and thank you for the questions from the audience. No doubt, there are a tremendous number of moving parts that even for those of us that have been in the middle of this for a fair number of months, if not years now, it's still difficult to understand. But at the end of the day, you know, here's what I continue to hear from the community. When I look at goal, goal number one, produce reclaimed wastewater cost-effectively. And, and the question is, does that mean build the most cost-effective plant? Or does that mean provide reclaimed water at a rate to the ratepayer that's cost-effective? And the answer is yes. And so from what I hear in talking to a large number of people, there is a real concern about the magnitude of the potential increase in costs associated with the project. I think their sticker shock is probably the best way to, to categorize it. And, and when I look at that, and, and I have kids who live here and are growing two grandkids here, they say to me, you know, gosh, a $200 rate, if that's the rate, it may not be affordable for them. And I think we're hearing that across a broad contingent of the community. And so my question, really, that I go back to with regard to this is, is not, do we need to have water independence? I absolutely agree that that is where we need to be because of the uncertainties in the future. And I mean uncertainties with regard to supply and cost. But secondarily, we've never really had a deep conversation about, are there opportunities to value engineer this project to get the price down to a level that might be more palatable for the community members that I talked to? And I, you know, I've talked to a large contingent of people, and, and I guess as you would expect, most everyone is concerned about the numbers that are floating around, and even though the rate study's not done yet, one could assume it's, it's going to be a much higher number than it is now, at least twice what it is now, or more. And so with that, you know, I beg the question of, of value engineering, and I look at location, you know, and it's, I think it's a valid question to ask. We've got neighbors that don't want it to be built on Righetti, but the price tag for that is $14 million or so. And, and so do you value engineer it and remove that piece of it and move it back, and then say, okay, your rates are going to go down significantly because of that? Or are there other opportunities within the context of what we've now established as criteria for building this thing that will allow us to do and get the same end result at a lower cost? And, and, you know, a contingency is always something that's there, that's a fuzzy number. And absent the contingency, I still have to ask the question, where are the moving parts that might be engineered from a value proposition standpoint? And I have to ask the, the engineers that question, who are the experts in technology, because one of our goals is to have, you know, emerging technology that will allow us to, you know, capture and filter out all of this stuff that's going to concern us in the future that's in our water and in our ground supply. And, and I just don't know the answer to that question now. In going out, the answer I continue to get is, find a way, because we can't afford the rate. And so, so for me, you know, $166 million project, I don't think is palatable for the community. I just don't think it's palatable. Not only is it not palatable, it's not affordable. And as a council person, I would be remiss if I didn't call that out and say, something has to be done to decrease that amount fairly significantly in order to meet the needs of our community in the future.
Marlos?
Well, I appreciate all the work that went into this report, and I know that our job today is really to just accept this report, and I think review it. And we have, we're moving forward with the rate study, and that's going to tell us something that we don't know today with greater certainty. And I think we have to keep moving forward. I appreciate all of John's comments, and I've, I've heard them myself, and if there is some magic bullet somewhere, some secret that we haven't yet explored, I would love to know about it also. But I think we will know from the Prop 218 exactly how much the community is going to be able and willing to accept. I would hope that we do with, if, if we're, if it passes, that we do something to help the low-income folks. And I know we can't do it with money that we collect through the utility rates, but we can do it with general fund appropriation. And I know we did with the last rate study and rate increase. We did provide some help for low-income folks who qualified for the PG&E reduction, and I would hope that we would consider that also in moving forward. But I think at this point, we have to keep moving. Thank you.
Thanks, Marlos. All good discussions, good comments. I don't know if there's much more to add to it. I know that, I appreciate some of the candid comments about coming late to the party a little bit. I've had conversations with many that have, I, the phrase would be sticker shock, looking at the price, and then, hey, haven't been paying attention as closely as I should, looking at it now, and there's a lot to catch up on. There certainly is. I, to some degree, that was like, oh, we need to just take a pause for a moment, and so we can review where we're, where we should be. We can't afford to do that. I, I think we do need to keep going. I think, pardon me, Mr. Walker, but as you're catching up, I think we're going to be having more availability to have these discussions, both on June 4th and June 5th. I know it's a lot of work to catch up. It's been a lot of work to keep up, really. And we've been, I say we, as a council, even former council, has been working diligently to keep up with all the volumes and keep everything going. We've had to actually make pauses and reconsider the directions we were going, and we did that with the Righetti site as well. We ended up looking at the, deciding on this South Bay site, and before this meeting, looking at all the information that we have here, I had to go back to our May 10, 2016 staff report. And I used that to kind of test myself on, on where we've been, and, and it was, it was sobering, but I'm glad to say that, you know, we had the same analysis within a couple percentage points. But basically, we had analysis on Rancho Calina, Righetti, Tri-W, Chevron, and Madonna, all the different sites, what the costs were. So we had a picture of that back in May, and the Tri-W site came in at $145 million based on those, that analysis at that time. And that was, that was total cost for, for all reclamation. So, you know, now, of course, we're looking at 166, and I know we talked about this today. Some of the, there are, there have been some variables, we have been doing some refining, but also we have a contingency in there that's pretty hefty. We've got a $26 million contingency in there as well. I know it's a long, it's a long road for our community to, to look at. I appreciate the work that's been done so far. We do have to keep moving forward. This is a receive and file. It's, I, I respect the comments about, are we getting this material out soon enough? This is one of those efforts. This wasn't having the material come out so we can make a decision by any means. It's to get the material out, have this type of discussion, and move forward. We're going to be having more discussions on this, including the Prop 218 and the dates that I just discussed. So we're going to, unless there's other discussions, we're going to continue to, to keep going forward on this. And I would invite folks, I know there's different citizens groups out there, from what I understand, I went to one recently and sat in and participated to a certain degree. We need, we need to make sure that we get all the facts straight, too. So as we start thinking through all these things, we need to take a pause within ourselves as we're going through that and, you know, look at the, the website, look for those facts, reach out to council members, staff to research, and make sure that we have the facts, and we're, we're moving forward on that. So that's, that's what I'd want to share with everyone. And with that, it's really just a receive and file. I think we've made our comments on this. We know that we're, we're going to be seeing that 218, that Prop 218 water rate study, which is going to tell another story, and we will have continued discussion on what the tolerance is of the community on what our water rates might be. And so we need to talk about that. It's interesting, though, we've talked about water, and I can remember back in the 90s when we were, when, when all that was a discussion on going on state water, gosh, who would have thought we would be where we are now? I mean, it's, you know, that was supposed to be the one. And that's, I, I think it's, we, looking at the resiliency and how we can be sustainable within the community should be, that's a hard one to put a value on. And, but I did, I will make one more comment. As I looked at the staff report from, from May 10th, it had a bar graph, and it showed the cost escalating. So, you know, every year we go, goes by, it's, it's about another $3 million every year that we, you know, we miss our target date. So we do have to work hard and keep going, and the balance of having public outreach and having people, you know, our community involved, and making sure that we're getting all the information out there is a tough one. I, I don't feel as though we're deliberately at a pace so we're not including the community. We're at a deliberate pace and trying to get as many people on board with the community. The flyers is an example. You know, having a newspaper article and putting all that information out there, it's, it's a lot to get out, out there. So I'll just pause with that, because I can, I can tell that, you know, we can go on a little bit longer with that deliberation. But truly, we, we need to, you know, there's, there's a, a lot to think about here, and we'll, we need to move forward. So I know there's one comment, Dave, you had a comment?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Just great, great point, and make sure the facts are straight. We said something a couple of minutes ago, I want to make sure that we say it correctly. So it was 20 years before, year and a half ago, that water rates were last raised. There was a sewer rate raised in 2008, I think.
Thanks, Matt. Thanks.
Just want to make sure that we're clear on those facts.
Great. Thanks. Without, without, unless there's any other discussion on that, we can conclude. Item C1, take a short recess, and then we can come back. Thanks. Thank you. Welcome back. Our next item on the agenda, item C2, is a presentation and discussion of our fiscal year 2015-16 city audits report. Mr. Smolinger.
Yeah, thank you, Craig Smolinger with the Finance Department. And just to give you a little kind of process here, I'm just going to give a brief snapshot of the process and timeline and just a little quick overview of kind of what some of the findings were in this year's annual audit. And then hand it off to Mr. Kenneth Poon from the Poon Group, who is our retained auditor.
Okay, great.
So just a quick note on the top. This is an annual required process that we have to go through. It's not because there's some crazy thing going on financially or embezzling funds or anything weird like that. Just standard process. So we did go through an RFP. I'm trying to spice it up a little. There's no one else here, so let's make auditing fun. All right. So in 2015, the city released a request for proposals, or RFP, and the Poon Group was selected. So the fiscal year 2014-15 audit, which was presented last year around this time, was the first year of that audit through the new auditing group, the Poon Group. And they're on retainer for this current year we're hearing, the FY 15-16 audit, we're about to hear the results of in a little bit. And a note on that, that fiscal year runs from July 1, 2015, through June 30 of 2016. So it's a little bit ago. Even the tail on that's roughly eight months ago. And we do have them on retainer to do the current year FY 16-17 budget as well, or audit, excuse me. And we have the option of retaining them for a couple more years after that. So data was gathered generally through site visits, electronic communication, and other means, through telephone calls or scanning or a lot of conversations, things like that. That process generally started in May with some interviews of staff. And then actually, more of the data gathering process was, was conducted from October forward. And that process generally included a review of expenditures paid, revenues received, contracts, and the general, generally accepted accounting practices and procedures, excuse So what you'll find in one of the five attachments under the internal controls attachments are four findings. So those findings are broken out into two categories. The first one is noted as a material weakness. Those are generally a little more severe. So that finding is related to finding 2016-001, if you follow along in your internal controls attachment there. And that's related to internal control of our financial reporting, generally tied to journal entries, which kind of move where some transactions get hit or just kind of transferring over funds through normal invoicing for like risk management type things where you bill out to different departments. And in prior years, those did not have the adequate level of review by a manager or the director. So currently, since I've been here from October of last year, 2016 forward, we do have that added layer of review going forward on all of those journal entries prior to them posting in the financial system. Such is one of the ways we're addressing these audit findings going forward. And then there are also three significant deficiencies noted. As noted, those are less severe. And Mr. Kenneth Poon will go over those in a little bit. But there are findings 2016-002 related to financial condition. You'll hear a little bit about the Government Accounting Standards Board. They issued a statement number 68, and that has to do with how we account for the long-term liability of our pensions. So that's kind of noted our deficit in our net position a little bit. There is finding 2016-003 related to accounting policies and procedures. That's because we don't have a clear binder and consolidated policies and procedures manual in the city as a whole, as a reference guide for all staff that, that move accounting processes forward. We are working on getting there. We're prioritizing that internally and making sure we get to those policies and procedures. And that's not to say we're flying blind. We do have checklist. We do have acceptable procedures going forward. We do make sure we have checks and balances, things like that. It just hasn't been consolidated to this point. And also finding 2016-004 related to the bond coverage ratio, and that has to do with the state water contract. So council took the proactive steps of increasing or approving the Prop 28, or I guess residents approved the Prop 218 proceeding, but the council took the steps to bring that forward for vote. So we have adequate revenues coming in to meet that bond, bond coverage ratio. And we should hit the required 125% of state water contract payment bond coverage ratio this current year in FY 16-17. So all findings have either been addressed or planned to be addressed. Noted here, and in the Management Partners 2015 operational review they did of the entire city operations, continual lean staffing levels make mitigating all audit findings nearly impossible. Doesn't mean we're not working to that end, but it does make it very difficult. And new staff are taking steps to address those perpetual findings to the extent possible, like the accounting and, the accounting procedures and policy manual. So our next steps include, staff's going to continue working on addressing those audit findings within the realities of lean staffing. As noted, Mr. Kenneth Poon from the Poon Group is going to present the audit findings for fiscal year 2015-16, which concluded on June 30 of 2016. And we're here to answer questions following the Poon Group's presentation. So let me load that up for him.
Great, Craig. So Mr. Poon, I guess, is going to present now. Welcome. Good evening. Thanks for sticking around.
Not a problem.
You got to listen to a very interesting presentation, didn't you?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, so let's go through my presentation tonight. I think Greg actually did a great job in doing majority of my work and talked a little bit about the finding, but I would like to give you a little bit more detail in my presentation. So what I'm going to do tonight is pretty standard presentation, is nothing, nothing different than other cities that I present to. So what I'm going to do tonight is actually go through the scope of work, audit responsibility, going through your financial statement, a brief summary of what's going on during the current year, the financial indicator and key pension information, because those information are very, very important to make your future decision. And then also going through the audit results. So the scope of work actually have a couple parts. The financial statement audit, which include the city's basic financial statement. But because you, the city also received the local transportation fund, the TDA's fund, those are actually subject to another separate audit. So that's why you do have like three separate report on TDA's. But my majority, like tonight, I'm focusing on the city as a whole. So, but also, at the same time, one of the items that the city is not subject to the audit because is the, the city has not spent more than $750,000 of federal expenditure. So that's why the single audit act is not required during the current year. So that's why you don't see a single audit report here. So going through the audit responsibility, as management yourself, you are fully responsible for the financial statement by presenting this financial statement in accordance with generally accepted accounting principle. So since the, the city is a state local government, so Government Accounting Standard Board, which is the standard-setting bodies for state local government, actually decide like what accounting rules to be set and the city needs to be followed. Adopt sound accounting policies. So there are a lot of accounting principle out there, so you make sure that you, you do adopt sound accounting policy in there. The next part is very, very important. Establish and maintain property internal control over financial reporting and compliance. So given the fact that the city is running a very lean situation, that's why we do have some findings talking about, we do have some concerns about internal control. So separation of duties are not proper, review process is not there. So that's why we want to bring it to your attention and having the new management team to address some of these concerns. So like, for example, the journal entries needs to be, needs to be reviewed before it was being posed, because journal entry is one of the risk area that you can transfer money in and out and without proper supporting documentation, that will be, become a bigger issues. When we are out here, we, you are required to provide evidence supporting to the amount and the disclosure to the, to the financial statement. So everything's got to be supported by, by supporting documents. Last but not least, even though we are not here to find fraud, but you do have the responsibility to have programs to prevent and detect fraud. Okay? So our responsibility as an auditors, we're here to render an opinion. By doing so, we need to perform our audit in two, like according to two standards. One is the general standard, the AICPA generally accepted auditing standard. And then also by contract, we are required to perform your audit under the government auditing standard, which means that we are required to report, have a separate report on internal control over financial reporting. So that's why you see a report talking about those material weakness and significant deficiency in a separate report. Communication with those charged with governance, that's why I'm here tonight, to present the audit result and going through a couple required communications. Assess audit risk of internal control over financial reporting and compliance. Audit process is not only taken tie to the supporting document. So basically, what we go through is a risk assessment process. So during this risk assessment process, we actually going through a whole long check, going through your accounting, accounting department, and then also understanding the unique transactions, understanding your operating environment, going through each different, like the major significant transaction class, which includes financial reporting, the cash receipt and billings, the expenditures and payables, payroll and related liabilities, which includes the last couple of years. We focus a lot in your census data regarding the, the net pension liabilities. Also, your, your general IT control, capital asset, long-term, that those are the couple major cycle that we actually focus on internal control and perform risk assessment. We determine the fairness presentation of the financial statement, so making sure that not only the numbers agree, but also the disclosure are properly reflected in these financial statement. And then last but not least is to render our audit opinion. So overview of the financial statement. So basically, the cities actually did prepare a comprehensive annual financial report and submitted to the GFOA for the, for the certificate program. So basically, within this report, you see three big sections. Introductory sections, which include the transmitted letters from management, the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. So since last year, you did get a, the award. So basically, that's mean, doesn't mean that you have good financial health, but actually you present everything in accordance with generally accepted accounting principle. And then this report is very comprehensive in all material respect. Also, the organization chart for the city, and then also principal official, which include the city council members listing in there. Our main focus is in the financial sections, because we are actually opining pretty much everything in the, in the financial sections. So that the first one you see is the Independence Auditor's Report is actually expressing our opinion on these financial statement. The MDNA, the Management Discussion and Analysis, which is a requirement under GASP 34, which implemented back in 2002, even though this report, this section is un-audited, but that actually is a really good summary of what's going on during the year, your, for the fiscal year, June 30, 2016, how you operated, what are the major events, so some major financial highlight, talking about the, the financial conditions, too. So coming down, it's, you have the basic financial statement. The basic financial statement, we do have a couple sections. The government-wide financial statement, which I call it a consolidated financial statement for the city, because in the past, you just go through fund by fund. You don't even have to see the whole entire city as a whole. These actually consolidated into a, what I call the primary government, which is the city as a whole, and break it down by two activities, which is, one is for the governmental programs, the governmental activities. And some is just, just like the business-type activities, which includes your, your water, sewer, the harbor, and the local transportations. So those are business-like types of activities, so that's why they have a separate column for it. The fund financial statement is how you use internally. So basically, include the general fund, some special revenue fund, those are pretty much restricted by third-party capital project fund, debt service fund, enterprise fund. Those are listed out individually in the fund financial statement. The notes to the financial statement, you have a lot of accompanying notes to the financial statement, so kind of give you a little bit more detail and in the qualitative basis. The required supplementary information, this is another, un-audited sections in the financial statement, but actually did give you a lot of information in there, key information, including the general fund budget and actual schedule, so that you know how well you are doing compared to the budget that you, you adopt. And then also, there's two schedules actually talk relating to pension. So schedule of changes in proportionate share of net pension liability and related ratio, and then the schedule of contribution. And then also, since GASP 75 has not adopted, so basically, you also see a schedule of funding of, funding progress for your OPEC plan. So those are important schedule. And then also, you do have other supplementary information in the back. And then the statistical sections, those are financial trend analysis that you can see for the past 10 years. So those are very informational. Okay? So just a brief overview of the financial statement. So this is the statement of net position. In another word, is your balance sheet as of June 30, 2015, 16. Break it down by both governmental activities and business-type activities. So as you can see, total asset for the city is about like $166 million, net of liabilities of about like $24 million, and then remaining net position of about like $143 million. You can also see there are two new elements, what I call the deferred inflows and deferred outflow resource. Those, those new elements has to, because of the new pension standard, there are something that needs to be deferred and use it in the future period. So that's why we are not using it in the current period and either expense or put it as a gain to the, to your financial condition. So that's why you see the deferred inflows and deferred outflows, and those are relating to the pension standard. So the net position actually, the biggest item in there is the investment in capital asset, because those are non-liquidated assets. So that's why you have a separate category on those. As of June 30, 2016, you have about like $139, like close to $140 million in net investment in capital asset. Restricted, which is either by enabling legislation or by third-party grant, like some grantor restriction, $3.1 million, and remaining $300 um, some grantor, um, uh, restriction, $3.1 million and remaining $309,000 as your unrestricted. So as you can see in your unrestricted for your governmental activities, you have a $5.7 million deficit, which is one of the condition that we want to brought it up to you, to bring it up to you. Uh, the, 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 one of the reason why you have a deficit is because of the recording of the net pension liabilities that you will be paying in the, in, in the future. Statement of activities, which is the income statement of the city. So total expense for the, for all your funds is about like 25.3 million. Net of program revenue, what I mean by program revenue is either you can charge the user for a fee or you can get grants or other contributions coming in and pay for it. So totaling of about like $17.3 million of, of, um, program revenue. So the net cost of service is about $8 million. So, um, general revenue, um, majority, uh, tax revenue, which include property tax, sales tax, uh, business license, all those added up to about like $9.9 million. So as a result, this is a great, uh, a good year. You bring it up a 1.9 million, closer to $1.9 million for the so, whole entire city, of which 770, um, 770,000 for the governmental activities and 1.1 million dollars for the business-type activities. General fund is the major, uh, is the main operating fund of the city. So that's why I would like to give you another snapshot here. The balance sheet as of June 30, 2016 was $8.6 million, a lot, net of liabilities of $1.5 million. As a result, you have a, a net, net fund balance of $7 million, of which $2.8 million is called non-spendable, assigned, uh, which is, um, some programs being assigned by, um, by the city of about like 79,000. And then the unassigned, which is about like $4.1 million. That is not designated for any programs. The income statement for general fund, uh, you have a total revenue of $12.2 million, expenditure of $12.1 million. So you kind of break it even. So $118,000, um, above, um, um, revenue over expenditure. So net of all the transfer incoming, uh, and also add, adding the transfer in from other funds, um, total change in the, uh, fund balance of about like $1 million for the general fund. So key financial data, um, and pension information. Couple of the racial analysis that I would like to show is the first one is the, just look at the governmental activities. The net cost of service compared to tax revenue is very important key ratio. One of the thing that, as you can see, your total net cost of service is about like $10 million. Net it, all the tax revenue is about like $9.3 million. So your ratio is about like 107%. But keep that in mind, that doesn't include all the, all the, um, costs allocated from the business-type activities of about like a million dollars. So once you bring that $1 million coming back, your, your net cost of service compared to tax revenue is actually low, up below 100%, which is actually good ratio. So the other one, uh, is a trying to figure out, figuring out your rainy days fund. Do you have a healthy, uh, reserve policy here? So, um, based on what we see so far, you have a $4.1 million in general fund. So total annual expenditure for the general fund is about like $12 million. The ratio is about like 34%. GFOA recommending, uh, it's about like a 10%. But as a professional myself, as a CPA, seeing a lot of cities in the, uh, industry, we are recommending you do have a three-month expenditure as your reserve. So basically you are actually a little bit above the three-month reserve. So which is, uh, the ratio is actually it's, it's appropriate. Okay? So GASP 68 and 71, this is the new pension standard. So, uh, last year since June 30, 2015, um, net pension liability, what I, uh, used to call the unfunded pension liability, first time recorded to your financial statement last year. This is the second year. So basically you do have two plans. So this year, uh, you record about like a 13-point, uh, close to $14 million of net pension liabilities, uh, from both plans. One from miscellaneous plan of, uh, close to $8 million. Safety plan is about like $6 million. The funded ratio is about like 75%. So, um, pretty much close, uh, the two of them are pretty, pretty close. So those, the $13 million is already included in your financial statement, but keep that in mind, these, these number is based on a discount rate of 7.5. So, um, I'll go through the detail on the, um, when we go through the second finding, uh, regarding the, uh, the, the financial condition, I would like to talk a little bit more about the, um, the pension, uh, impact because CalPERS already approved that the rate is going to drop from 7.5% to 7%. So that will have some impact to your financial statement. Okay? So the audit results, um, I'm happy to issue the unqualified, like unmodified opinions for all opinion units, which means that the financial statement are fairly present in all material respect. All the accounting policy have been consistently applied, estimates are reasonable and the disclosure are properly reflected in the financial statement. We do not have any disagreement with management in terms of the accounting, um, and the audit procedures that we perform. However, we do have significant deficiencies and material weakness that we identified during our audit. No accounting issue this year, there's no new measurement, any new measurement that has an impact to your financial statement and no inappropriate activities were noted. So that's mean, we did not find any material, um, misstatement due from fraud. So. So the first one is, um, Craig already, uh, talked a little, a little bit about the journal entries. So basically due to the lack of staff in the, um, in the finance department. So basically we, we do know that there are some journal entries that was not being properly approved before it, it was being recorded to the, to the financial state, uh, to the general ledger. But also it's kind of like when we actually come out in October to perform our field work, um, seems like the book is not completely closed. So that's why there were about like 26 journal entries provided by the city management. And then also we, we do propose about like 11 audit adjusting journal entries to be recorded to your financial statement so that your financial statement are fairly present in all material respect to, in accordance with GAAP. So, um, that's why this is one of the most important things that you need to fix immediately because this has a major risk because, uh, journal entry is one of the, uh, one of the area that you can easily, uh, make journal entries to manipulate your financial statement, which we don't like to see. The second, the second finding is regarding the financial condition. Yep. The second one is regarding the financial condition because last year is the first year that was, uh, that's implement the GASP 68, that's book all the unfunded liabilities to your, um, on the face of the financial statement. That's actually create a lot of problems for city's government. And, and as you can see, your governmental activities has, has a $5.7 million of deficit. And then also because of your, your, uh, enterprise fund is also get hit by the unfunded pension liability. The harbor fund actually did have a deficit of about like 608,000. And then also the capital improvement, capital project fund also do have a, on the sign fund balance deficit of $406,000 in there, which had, which has now been corrected. So, um, because of the 7.5% drop into 7%, so basically you will see there's a, a big change to your unrestricted net position in the future. So, um, I highly recommend it. I believe you already did the, uh, the analysis that will have some, uh, impact to your financial statement. So one of the important note disclosure that you want to see what will be like, kind of estimate the impact from, bring from 7.5 to 6.2 to 7, take a look at the sensitivity analysis in the pension note disclosure. That's key, kind of give you an analysis of what will be the difference if I'm dropping 1%. Even though we don't have the 7% being reported in here, but you, it's actually, uh, report a 6.5%. So you can kind of give yourself an idea of how much, uh, money that was being add to your, how much liability that you need to add to your, your bottom line as a deficit here. 2016 dash 003, this is a big, um, finding because we consolidated all the, uh, all the issues into this one finding. The first one is during our review of control environment, uh, we basically didn't see a comprehensive policy and procedures, uh, in place. This is a live document that we would like to see for your staff because, um, this actually structured all the policy and procedures for all, uh, accounting system so that your staff can use. The second one is actually because of the, uh, you, you don't have enough staff. So that, that is exactly why we have, uh, this item is we note that insufficient separation of duties happening. So basically one person is do it all. So, um, we, we want to have a little bit separation of duties, creating some review process during the, um, um, uh, for your transactions, making sure that it was, uh, properly reflected in the financial statement. The third bullet point here is actually you do have a lot of sub-ledger system that is not interfacing with your general ledger system. So that, that needs a lot of, um, manually reconciling the, the sub-ledger system to the general ledger system. So basically our recommendation is perform these procedures in a timely manner so that you don't have, uh, you don't create the big variances between your sub-ledger and your general ledger. The fourth is, um, talking about the procurement process. We note that the city does not require approved, uh, purchase order. We additionally perform duplicate transactions testing. We know that two out of the 35 that we tested were duplicated. So that is one of the reason why you need to have proper internal control and review process. Separation of duty is very important. The fifth one is talking about the, um, the, um, internal control over payroll and, uh, HR system. We note that the personal action form for the part-time employee is not being properly retained. So even though they are part-time employees, better to put it in, in the HR files there. Number six, during our observation on internal control over payroll, same thing, the timesheet of the directors, even though they are directors level, needs to be approved by somebody. Last but not least, the number seven, uh, we note that there were a number of excess spending over appropriation. So basically in, in one of the note disclosure in the CAFR, we talked about the, uh, the, the, um, the spending over, uh, the appropriation. So make sure that you re, um, if there's additional that you don't foresee, make sure you adjust your budget too. So that's why you don't spend over the appropriation. So other than that, I don't, um, the number four, we talked a little bit about it. One of your, your, your bonds actually required 125% uh, bond coverage ratio, but you only have like, um, 116%. So there's something missing, um, there. So basically I'm hoping after you, like the, the rate increase, bring up the revenue, those ratio will be, will be backing up to 125%, which is required under the bond covenants. So that's conclude my presentation tonight and I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Poon. I'll start to my right. Marleus, do you want to have any questions or?
I can start. I actually asked Craig to answer a question for me and I, I just think it would be helpful for, um, the folks still watching and still in the audience, if you could explain exactly what, uh, finding 2016 dash 002 means in terms of implications for the city's financial health. So that's either Craig or.
So can you, do you want to take it to the statement of net position?
Sure. Yeah, because one of the, the, the financial, like basically when we are doing the audit, we also need to evaluate the financial condition of the city. So we don't want to see the city of Stockton, the city of San Bernardino's coming, coming to any other cities within California. So that's why, um, especially after the implementation of GASP 68, that's actually, it's a big implement, uh, implication of, um, depleting your net position, which is your net worth of the city.
It affected everybody though, is that correct?
It's affected everybody.
Cities across California are experiencing this very same phenomenon.
Yes. But as an artist myself, we, we, we have the responsibility to point that out to you, especially when CalPERS finally take actions to move the, um, the discount rate from 7.5% to 7%. And eventually, um, if the investment return is not coming back as what they expect, they may further reduce it to 6%. So those are the story that I got from CalPERS.
Right, right. Since you did the audit on us last year, um, did you see improvement? I mean, comparing last year's audit to this year's audit?
Yes, we did see some improvement, especially on, on the timing, because we, we actually finished up a couple of months earlier than, than last year. But some of the, the concern didn't really change much because there's still like, you don't have enough staff, uh, in your finance department. And as you can see, in the first, um, finding, we do actually, uh, propose about 11, uh, audit journal entry, which is, um, really, really significant as a size of a city like yours.
Is it? So how, when you do, uh, sampling of journal entries, well, how many do you sample?
Well, we based on determine the size of the, um, of the, uh, the journal entry pools. If we see if there's about like 20, like 200 journal entries being posed for the whole entire year, we select about like between somewhere, uh, 40 to 60 to look at.
Okay. And, and so the number of errors you found or mistakes or, uh, was this normal or average?
It's average. As the size of a city like yours is average.
Given the size of the city? Okay.
Yep.
Okay. And I know I, I, you have pointed out that we still don't have a purchase order system. And, um, I, I know it's, but it was a long time ago that we actually bought one. So I'm concerned about why it's taken almost two years to actually implement it because I know we, we bought it in, I think July of 2015. So maybe Craig can answer that one for me.
Sure. I can't speak specifically to what happened prior to my arrival in, in October. What I can probably re-note is, um, what Mr. Poon mentioned about the short, the, uh, the lean staffing that we've had to implement things like this. What I can do is hope to implement that in the near future.
Yeah.
Obviously that, that kind of is balancing other workloads and, you know, going through the budget we're doing right now or budget forecasting. So, you know, we don't fall off the fiscal cliff for the, the pension-related cost and things like that. But no, I can't speak to, to why that wasn't.
But have you looked at it? So do you know, is it complicated or is it a training issue or? I'm just curious to know why, why we haven't been able to actually work on it. Maybe Dave can reply.
I've, I've breezed over.
You've looked at it.
I've, I've kind of gone in at a, a fairly visceral level. It is reasonably complicated. It's probably more of a training and getting everyone up to speed and using a system and following a process and getting one of those, um, accounting policies and procedures in place to make sure everyone's following a consistent path going forward with it, um, which does take a little bit of time.
So that, that last thing was the main thing is, um, getting the, the policy and the procedure for using the system in place.
Okay.
And, uh, the, we'll probably come back to it and I, it's unfortunate, but as we are balancing all of the competing demands in the finance department, um, with staffing that is, that is not optimal, there are things that are not going to get done. And I, and I would caution Craig a little bit by saying we're going to get to it soon, I think he said.
Yes, he did.
Because it, it's just a, how much, what capacity does the finance department have? And as we're doing budget forecasting and we're re-looking at CalPERS and we're building a budget and we're looking at deficiencies in an audit and we're, uh, adding requirements for oversight of, or, uh, financial, changing financial reporting for the WRF, all of those things. Craig and I have to prioritize where we're going to spend the time that they've got on those things.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks.
John?
Thanks. Thanks for your presentation. Appreciate your succinctness, if that's a word. I think it is. One question I had for you, Mr. Poon, was the bond coverage ratio issue on your page number 13 of your presentation being less than 1.25. Was our new rate in effect at that time from our last Prop 218 increase?
That's already include, from the last Prop 218 actually increased, because we need to calculate the current year. So it's basically, you are still using the rate that was being approved like long time ago. So that's why you didn't hit the 125.
Right.
Let me clarify that. Yeah. The previous year, we were at 77% bond ratio coverage. This year, this one pass that we're talking about, we were at 116%. So we had a 51% increase that was due to the approved water rate increase and the actual increase that we executed in July of 15. So that bump that went from, went into place in July of 15, by the end of July, the end of June of 16, had taken us from 77% to 116%. The increase that went into effect in July of 16 will take us over the top, over 125%.
That's why I was looking for a yes or no. And if it was yes, then obviously, it would have been a problem. But the fact is, it wasn't in effect in terms of having full impact, and we now should be above or at 1.25. And that's good. That's all I was looking for, is trying to make this a positive.
The point was, it hadn't been full impact yet. But we went most the way there.
Fully realized. Thank you. Thank you for that. And the, could you expand on your page 13, item number seven, for me? During our audit, we noted there were a number of excess spending over appropriations.
Okay. Let me go in...
Do you mind if I jump in real quick, just before we get there?
I'd actually like to hear from the auditor, and then I have some questions. That's okay? Thank you.
Sure. Actually, it's in note 13, which is page 85 of the comprehensive annual financial report. Basically, every year, you adopt budget. So basically, it's the appropriation that you adopted. So when we actually look at it, the adopted appropriation is actually, is the law. So if there's anything over that, in excess of it, that's mean you are not in compliance with the laws that you adopt. So for example, the general fund, there are a couple, like, five departments out there. The administration, the finance, the fire, the police, and the public works. Each department actually do, actually spend more than you adopted the budget. So for example, the administration, you are over by $183,000. Finance, over by $56,000. Fire, over by close to $15,000. Police, over by $20,000. And then public works is over by $745,000. So one of the thing what you can do to avoid having this situation, if you know you have extra spending, you may need to basically thinking about amending your budget so to approve your budget limit to go a little bit higher so that you don't have this situation that you basically not in compliance with what you adopted.
So in essence, you're saying we broke the law?
Broke your own ordinance. Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So then for staff, I would ask, and this was prior to your tenure, so I just want to make Mr. Smolinger aware of the fact that I'm aware of that. My issue is, we have a mid-year correction that we do, and maybe this is a question for Mr. Buckingham. What happened from a staff standpoint? And why weren't we notified?
So we, it was May of last year that Mr. Poon came and presented the audit for the previous year. One of the issues identified in the audit of that year of the previous year is that we had not been bringing to the council mid-year adjustments based on changing conditions. And so I believe you'll recall, it was, I believe, in November, December of this past year, we actually brought a mid-year adjustment that will affect this year. But in essence, we hadn't learned of that issue through the audit until a month before the end of the fiscal year that we're talking about. And so now we are bringing those adjustments to you on a regular basis to ensure that you've approved the allocation of that, of those expenditures.
I guess I thought last year, there was a mid-year adjustment. Maybe I'm not recollecting. It's been a standard policy I thought was...
It was a mid-year budget report, but in that, I don't believe that we went back and reallocated or changed the spending limit for those various funds.
Okay. So we brought it forward, and those funds were not addressed, I guess, is what, is that what you're saying?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. Okay. That clears it up for me. I noticed that your exact finding on 2015 for the accounting policies and procedures was a material weakness, and this year, you do not list it as a material, but a significant weakness, which is still nonetheless a concern. What changed that?
It's the magnitude. Because one of the thing that we saw that there's still, like, we saw that there's some improvement in following the procedures, but at the end of the day, you don't have enough people to put the internal control together. So that's why we decided to lower the magnitude of the findings, dropping from material weaknesses to significant deficiency, because the thing was, we know that there's procedures in place, but it's not really, it's not documented. So that's why we lowered that magnitude.
Okay. Great. And then I, from a process standpoint, in other cities that you work with, on audit findings, material weaknesses and significant weaknesses, what's the standard of practice for cities in terms of reporting back to the fiduciary on a routine basis for correcting those until you come again and maybe find them? Is there kind of a standard practice that you're aware of that cities use?
There's no standard practice, but best practice here is you do actually starting with a log of all the findings that we noted, because I do have clients that they use internal audit, and the internal audit, their finding is much more detailed than ours. So basically, they create a log, including the internal audit findings, our audit findings, or some other regulatory finding, so that they keep track of a log and communicate to city council or audit committee, that some of them, they do have audit committee on a regular basis.
Great. Thank you. And my last question is, just wanted to clarify, your page nine, the net pension liabilities, the discount rate that during the time that you did this audit was 7.5%. It's now seven. And I hear you say...
Well, CalPERS actually, in December, basically shortly after we issued this financial statement, they approved to drop the rate from 7.5% to 7% progressively in the next couple of years. So basically, by the time they approved the dropping of the rate, the valuation and all the actuarial work was completed based on a 7.5%.
And I thought maybe you said during that, your presentation on this, you made a statement, I thought about it moving to 6.5, or you had heard something about that?
Well, there is rumors out there, but it's all depending on the investment rate of return. Are they actually be able to coming back to where they're supposed to be? Or like, is that above the 7.5? Because anything below 7.5, even though they make money, is not basically achieve their goal and objective. So that's why it impacts the whole entire calculation of your liability. So that's why if the investment rate of return is not good enough to actually sustain the 7%, they may drop further to 6%.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your presentation.
You're welcome.
Thanks, John. Matt? Brad?
No questions, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. I don't have any speaker slips for this, so I'm just looking at the audience to make sure. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council for discussion and comment. Thanks, Mr. Poon. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And we'll start, Brad, you want to start us off on discussion?
I don't have anything to say.
Okay. Great. Matt?
One thing I can make note of, and John kind of alluded to it, is being this is the second one in the last few years, I like the clarity brought forth with this study. And so I think bringing into it, and the quote-unquote transparency and daylighting a lot of things and bringing to, I mean, although we have some problematic issues going forward, I appreciate the news. Thanks.
Marla?
I wanted to thank the city for this comprehensive financial report. It is incredible. I love the data section. I actually looked at all of the charts and all of the figures, and so I really, my hats are off to you. And thank you also for the audit, but I love the financial, the statistical analysis.
We'd be remiss if we didn't acknowledge that Susan Slaton was the key mover in putting all that together.
I wondered who did it. Yeah. Thank you.
John?
Yes, thank you. So my concern is the management letter. And again, with all due respect to Mr. Smolinger, who was not here during this audit, I directed at him because obviously, he's got to correct these issues. But to have two years of significant lack of policies and procedures as a first material weakness and then a significant weakness with little progress in making that happen, I understand being short-staffed and those kinds of issues. But I guess my expectation would be is that, Mr. Smolinger, at present, you need to tell us as the fiduciary, Mr. Smolinger, exactly what you need to get these things fixed, because I do consider them to be significant, as I'm sure you do. And to have a purchase order system not be implemented after three years, two and a half years, or two years that it was purchased, to me is ludicrous. So I guess I would like to see a routine report to the council quarterly on your progress on these issues and recommendations for change that we might consider if some changes have to occur in order for you to be more efficient or effective, be it resources, tools, or what have you. I do want to compliment staff because I know it's been difficult. You've been burning the candle at both ends. I know that. There's been a lot of catch-up that you've had to do. Excuse me. And so I don't want to make this a big negative thing, because I think you're inheriting significant amount of this. But we're here to help, and I want you to know that. And I want you to know that you need to let us know what you need to get this thing fixed. So thank you very much.
Okay. Thanks. I just want to make a comment, and Craig, thanks for meeting with me today, going over the staff report and basically the findings that Mr. Poon, wow, did he already go? Wow, he did, huh? Yeah. So appreciate being able to go through the report. You know, I did discuss with you the debt coverage ratio and as a policy or as one mechanism to ensure that we insert into the budget document that identifies that we're, where we are on that debt coverage ratio. So, you know, we look at the, our water fund, you know, have some mechanism in there that just says, hey, here's the calculation. This tells us whether or not we're meeting our debt coverage ratio. And I think it's something I'd like to see us pursue in this coming budget when we do that. That doesn't necessarily mean that, well, first of all, we made the correction in our water rates to get there. I, you know, I think it's just prudent that we, you know, have it a little bit more on the forefront, other than just the audit. So going back to implementing some of the processes and tools that, from your department, the question is, what do you need? And first off, I was thinking, while we're taking on, we recognize that we have a lean staff, and we also should recognize that we wanted to increase the financial reporting and participation in our WRF. So as I recall, we had a discussion as a council whether or not we want to look for an outside source to manage that financial portion of things. So when we have to consider all aspects of your department and how priorities are shifting, I'll just speak to that right now. Not that we need to make an answer. We need to have direction on that. But I'm speaking to that because we need to recognize that as a council, we've had lots of discussion on how we're monitoring the finances of the project. And thanks for taking the responsibility and saying, hey, we can do that, but we also need to recognize if we're that thin, then maybe we need to look at a different way of doing it. So I'm, you know, just recognizing that.
So yes, I completely agree with you. Excuse me. Cold coming on here. I do have some good ideas about how to get there. I haven't gone through those with Dave yet to kind of vet those and go through their proper chain of command, but I assume that'd be something we could address.
Sure. And, you know, we're getting up to speed, and I think we just have to pay credit for what we've done within the department. And I think we do owe that to the department to recognize them for the work and looking at, you know, being here tonight. So, you know, thanks.
Well, thank you for saying that. And one of the points I was going to make a little earlier, if you look at consent item A6, the budget amendment item, that's a prime example of addressing one of the audit findings, making sure you didn't overspend or overexpend above appropriation. So you broke your own law that Mr. Poon mentioned as well. So there are things like that that we are addressing. This stuff isn't just sitting on the table and collecting dust, and we're not doing anything about it. It's just, as you mentioned, the level that we're able to get to those.
It's hard to measure yourself sometimes, isn't it?
Well, it's easy when someone's paid to do it for you, so.
All right. Well, thanks. No more comments unless there are any comments to the left or to the right? Okay. We can, we've complete on this portion? Okay. Motion to receive and file. Okay. So I make a motion to receive and file.
Second.
A motion by Mayor Irons, second by House Member McPherson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Motion carries. Five oh. Okay. Moving on to our next item.
Okay. Are you ready?
Let's do it, Scott.
All right.
You're the guy.
All right. So this is a continuation of our conversation that started back on February 28th, so a month ago, on the Market Plaza and going out with a request for qualifications, see if we can't find some folks interested in doing a project there. As the council may recall, on February 28th, the council provided two points of direction to staff. One of them was to go talk with the general plan advisory committee about this site specifically and get input from them related to items to include in the RFQ, specifically because we were going to be talking on the 8th with the GPAC about the downtown and waterfront strategic plan. It included opportunity site seven, which was the Market Plaza site. And the second point of direction provided by the council on February 28th was to return with a copy of a draft RFQ. And so that's in your packet here this evening. On March 8th, when we met with, when the staff met with the GPAC... On March 8th, when we met with -- when the staff met with the G-PAC to discuss this specific issue, to get input for the council, they gave us a sort of laundry list of items. And so some of them are on the screen there. They said include a mixed-use hotel, restaurants, or retail development in that location. They suggested that we not describe the hotel as high-end, but instead as full-service. They recommended that we -- that the council not include the Off-the-Hook lease site in the RFQ, I think mostly because they thought it was unfair because the current process is already ongoing. And so you had proposers that have submitted on the RFP for that site, so have expended resources, effort, time, money toward that end. They were not interested in any large monolithic structure on the site. They wanted to incorporate some sort of parking structure, garage solution into this to replace the parking that would otherwise be lost on this site. They wanted it to step down the slope because we have a change in topography there. They requested that you include varying roof lines and whatever comes forward, again, to reduce that sore, scale, and mass type thing for that site. They suggested that we not include a museum in this, probably not the appropriate location, that we incorporate retail and restaurant down on the Embarcadero frontage so that you end up with retail and restaurants on both sides of the Embarcadero down there. They weighed in on potentially having a seafood or artisanal product market there, as long as that wasn't going to take away from existing seafood markets that we had in town. And so this input that's provided is actually reflected in the RFQ that's attached to your staff report. Take a brief pause here and speak to the properties and remind the council and those watching that are still awake out there of what properties we're talking about here. So we're talking about the Centennial Parkway project that the city council reviewed and approved a draft of back in January. It includes the lot that the city owns that has the Zestazio's restaurant building on it. It includes the parking lot below that. And then would include -- it includes the -- potentially includes the parking lot at the corner of Pacific and Market. And so you see the area in blue is kind of the Market Plaza area I just described, and then the area in green is the Centennial Parkway, again, that was approved by council for a draft concept plan back in January. Points of decision for the council this evening would be, should we include all of the items that were recommended by G-PAC? Pretty much all of those are in the RFQ at this point. Are there any other items or direction the council would like to give as it relates to the RFQ? The big one, should the RFQ include the Off-the-Hook lease site? Would like you to authorize us to release the RFQ. In conclusion, this RFQ does support your number-one draft goal for fiscal year 1718, and that's to achieve fiscal and economic sustainability. The RFQ will serve to identify qualified and interested parties that would be capable of bringing forth a project for this location, for both Market Plaza and Centennial Parkway, and potentially for Off-the-Hook, depending on what the council decides. And probably most importantly, this RFQ process binds the city to nothing. So if the city decides at some point in this process they don't want to proceed, then we don't have to. Hopefully, though, we would get the RFQs, and that would lead us to an RFP process. We hopefully have identified a couple of qualified firms that would -- that could come forward with a request for proposal, for a proposal on the property. So that's what we're hoping to identify as part of this process. Next steps is if the council authorizes release of the RFQ, we'll move forward with developing a mailing list, and we'll be posting it to the city's website. And there's a few other sites out there that we can post proposals like this on to hopefully get some folks to give us a response. With that, that's the end of my presentation, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Okay, great. Pardon me. I don't have any speaker slips for public comment on this item. Just want to make note of that. So with that, we'll open up for questions from council. Red, do you want to start us off on questions?
Yes, Scott. The step, the development down the slope. I understand we do have a difference in elevation. Is that something that's feasible? I have trouble visualizing that.
It is, yeah. You could have different levels for the -- like, you could have the -- say, we have the existing parking lot down there. You could put a structure on there that was the parking structure, you know, and then up above it, you could have the hotel that stepped backed up onto the top of the bluff. So you could do something along those lines. And then maybe in the front of the parking structure area, you would hide that by having some storefronts along there or something like that to bring forward that sort of retail restaurant at the Embarcadero street level, that type of thing. So you'd have a sort of staircase, you know, effect going up there. That would be one example of what you could do.
Okay. That's all I have.
Matt?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions here, Scott. In terms of fitting in, looking at the Market Plaza and Centennial Parkway, and understanding that, how does that Centennial Parkway, Market Plaza, fit into the changes, or does it fit into the changes going on with the libertine and then roses? Knowing that those two buildings are going to be looking to perhaps change or changing, and then that Centennial Parkway, do those go in hand-in-hand in any way with those two projects?
Roses Landing is going through an approval process right now to change the upper floor of that structure to hotel use? Excuse me. They've been to planning commission and will be soon coming to council. The libertine, the council's authorized a consent of landowner to Bert Kobl, who's in the audience, to redevelop that site. And so, I mean, that was prior to us going down the road for the Centennial Parkway or Market Plaza concepts. That was a sort of previous effort.
Okay, so those two items?
Sort of predates it. So that predates the -- on the one side, we do have language in the conditioning for Roses Landing that they would potentially participate in the implementation of Centennial Parkway.
Okay. And then looking -- just looking at the map, and when you say that in terms of the libertine and roses, and then with the Off-the-Hook project and that RFQ process going through, what's the timeframe if it was kept separate with the RFQ for Off-the-Hook? What would that be?
That's a good question. So the RFP process. Off-the-Hook is a request for proposal.
Yep, sorry.
And so we went out with that. We've reviewed it with council once, went back, provided some analysis in a letter to the proposers. And then they've come back, and two of the three have responded and resubmitted. We have those in my office now, copies to Eric and Dave. And if the council this evening decides not to include the Off-the-Hook project into the RFQ, we will move forward without review. We'll finalize it probably Friday, and it'll be on the next council meeting for decision.
Okay. So understanding that, getting the background for not just me, but perhaps people watching. In terms of the Market Plaza and the Market Plaza, Zestazio's building, the parking areas, how will the changes to the Centennial Parkway be done within this scope of this RFQ?
So, I mean, it'll be -- it would be something that would be negotiated into the process. You know, we would have someone that would come forward that would be interested in developing the site. Obviously, we control -- we own the property that these things sit on that are out there in various forms. And the idea would be a -- likely be a public-private partnership that we would negotiate the terms of to get the plaza improvements constructed. And that would allow them to build some sort of project on the site that would have the amenities that we were asking for, hotel, mixed-use hotel with retail and restaurant, those types of things. And that could be through a lease, you know, negotiated situation, could be through purchase, you know. But, you know, it's going to be kind of something that's all mixed into the, you know, into the process. Don't know what it's going to look like right now. We talked to the, you know, when we brought it to the council before, the idea was sort of to leave it open-ended until we had somebody that came forward. So that's what we're kind of looking to do now.
Okay, thanks. Great. John?
Thank you, Scott. Just a couple of questions. One, the description of the items on your page, I should say, page 89, potential catalyst projects associated with Market Plaza site include the following, and then you have that list. In the RFQ, I think I saw a statement that you didn't want to be overly prescriptive. In my career, when we sent out RFQs, you know, the developer often has a pretty good idea of how they can make a project work and what it takes to make it work. And I wanted to make sure that if we approve this RFQ process that we're allowing that to happen. Is that, in your opinion?
It is written to allow that to happen. We -- I didn't even -- I mean, we went back to sort of check. This is the catalyst project identified out of the DWSP. But I went specifically to the G-PAC and said, you know, what do you want this to look like? And that's where I got the longer list that I showed you, you know, up on the screen. And that's sort of the things that we put in there with a caveat that, you know, we'd be interested in any ideas that make sense for the location, basically. This was some input that we'd gotten from the city. Like couching it is, this is input for things that, you know, to this point, we might be interested in based on the processes. So our -- the RFQ speaks to the fact that we're going through a general plan and LCP update, and we're getting a lot of input from that. And we have a downtown waterfront strategic plan that deals with this area. And so it lets them know that, hey, there's information out there that they can look at to get some ideas. Because what'll often happen is when you have projects that can forward, a developer will walk in, want to sit down and meet with me, and like, what does the city want here? And so it's nice to give them a little bit of an idea about what we might be thinking. And so I think it kind of does that.
Good. And then the other question I had is, and I think I asked you this before, but maybe you thought about it more, and maybe you can refresh my memory. What advantage is there to the city specifically and a potential developer if the Off-the-Hook site is included in the RFQ?
So, you know, when I was thinking about this originally, when I originally brought it forward to the council, I saw that as being -- so all of the folks that I've talked with, I've been doing this for about 20 years. And so I've talked with many hoteliers and hotel developers that have done a lot of work, mostly on the central coast because this is where I work. And there's always a thing that they're interested in is the unique property. The thing that's got the, you know, it's got something special about it. And having water access is special and unique. And it gives them an opportunity to have different types of rooms, so different types of offerings, has the ability to get you access to the water so you can have kayaks and something like that maybe there, or I don't know. It just gives you a lot of different opportunities that you don't otherwise have if you're just on the land side. And so -- and I've heard that from many hoteliers. They like the unique project, something that's a little bit different. And that provides them the opportunity to do something that's a little bit different. And so that's why I brought it forward to you before and why it's not in the RFQ currently. The council would have to make an affirmative decision to add it back in. But why I brought it forward is because you need to be able to make those decisions, you know, given the situation that the city finds itself in from a financial standpoint. So you -- we should always bring forward those things sort of dispassionately, even though we were in a process, point out what the downside of that is and what the upside potentially is. So that's what I did.
Appreciate it. Thank you. No other questions.
Marlaus?
Okay. I was just looking here at the RFQ. And contrary to the staff report, where we list a variety of different possibilities for the site, the RFQ actually says the city is considering the development of a full-service hotel, minimum 50 rooms with associated mixed-use development. I'm wondering, do you think that might limit the creativity somewhat? Would it be better to say something like, the city is considering the development of a multi-use visitor-serving project, which might include a hotel?
We could be less specific if the council's interested in that. My thought process in, you know, putting a limit, you know, putting some numbers on the hotel is the conversation we've been having up to that point was high-end hotel. The G-PAC didn't really like that, so we kind of massaged the language a little bit. But if you're going to have full service, you're probably not going to have a 30-room hotel. That's boutique and small and not going to get you there. And so I was trying to put, you know, some language in there that sort of spoke to the fact that we need something that's going to be a little bit larger to get the full-service thing. But if you're not so interested in that, we can change it to something similar to what you said.
Well, I'm just thinking that that really does limit. It suggests that that's really what we're looking for. And we may not get the creative proposals if we limit it like that. So I guess I would prefer not quite that specificity of a minimum. And I'm not sure why we would need -- that might actually limit the number of people who would want to bid on it, actually. And I know I asked you offline to explain to me why it was important that the person or the developer have experience in development approximate to the coast. And I wasn't clear why that would be important. And maybe you could explain that.
Well, we want folks to come forward. I mean, the ones that are going to be most likely be successful are the ones that have experience developing along the coast. Not just -- that's one from the development standpoint. Like, they've done development in the coastal zone in the state of California because it's a special place. And if you do all your work in the Central Valley and you come here and you've never done that before, you're going to have difficulties getting up to speed, a steep learning curve to some extent. And then we want somebody that's probably, you know, done coastal development as it relates to, if you're interested in having hotel mixed-use projects like that, that have done them in areas like this so they know what works and what doesn't work. So that's kind of why -- that's kind of where I was coming from.
And would you expect to get some specific ideas in the RFQ process?
Yeah, likely they would come forward with examples of things they've done or examples of things they would like to do and then give you what their experience is. And that's how we would qualify them through the process to be able to move to the next step, which the council would authorize going to the RFP. And those would be the firms that would propose on the RFP. That would be the idea of it.
Okay. And last question. Tell me exactly how you would market this RFQ. I know you mentioned putting it on the city's website, but are you going to do it fairly widely and just in California or outside of California or?
Well, there's some --
Trade journals?
There's some listings for these types of postings that you can put out there. They go nationwide.
They do.
People pay attention to them nationwide, I should say. I have hoteliers on the central coast that I know just from working on the central coast for a long time, and I'm going to send it to them. And then we'll post it on our bid site because people subscribe to that. And so on our posting site. So, yeah, so that's another way we'll do it, and it'll be on the website. So that's -- there's at least two different posting sites out there on the web that take these types of things. And then probably post it on the American Planning Association's website as well. That's another one that folks subscribe to. So there's a few to get it out there.
Right, so but you are talking about doing it fairly widely?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Marlaus. So Scott, you touched on a little bit what is going to be the process. So we have RFQ, comes back, we evaluate it. Then we have -- then it comes back to council. We review what an RFP would be. Can you talk to me a little bit about that?
So we'll get responses to the RFQ. We'll have a team that we put together, and we'll vet that. And then we'll hopefully have a couple of -- I mean, it'd be nice to at least have two or more that we can qualify to go to the next step. And that would be really to have them put together proposals, an RFP, basically. So you would have an idea of projects that they could bring forward. And then we'll vet those and run those through council, so.
So gets reviewed, that review comes back, and the RFP will come back to us? And then we'll kind of go through that process, is?
Basically, when we want to have them respond to an R -- if we choose the teams that are qualified to propose on the RFP, I want to come back to council and say, hey, this is what you want to include in it. We have this section here that talks about what the -- in general, in this RFQ, there's a piece that talks about the next step and what, in general, would be included in the RFP. It's so -- they sort of understand what the process is. It sort of lays out moving forward, so it does that, yeah.
All right, good. I'll just double-check, make sure there's anybody for public comment on this. Public comment, come on up. I didn't get a speaker slip from you, but.
I know.
Hi, I'm Sharice Hansen, under the Sea Gallery, one of the applicants for the RFP process. I just wanted to listen, and I didn't want to think that the RFQ was still thinking about off-the-hook sites, so I'll put in my two cents. I did attend the G-PAC meeting, and I'm sorry, but I feel like they had a much bigger, broader scope than it's just not fair to the applicants. They commented on how far apart the buildings were from where the Market Plaza would be, and how far the off-the-hook site is. That was an important feature. The fact that it would be a very large-scale building that wasn't public-serving, most likely, in the center of the Embarcadero. And then they also said that there's also an issue with the fact that there's two different lease sites with different circumstances, that would be almost like two different projects in general. And, and then, and then I sent to you guys an email. I know that everything has been really a lot of information for you guys to look over, but if you haven't had a chance to look at that, and you're already on the side of including off-the-hook into it, I would beg you to take a little bit more time and read the email, because it has a lot of the pertinent circumstances. We are literally two weeks away from being able to even start the permit process. My shop, where it is now, is pretty undetermined as far as where it's going to go. And so the tenants, they can't get a lease. And if you extend this to be included in the RFQ, it'll most likely either stay vacant with not being performing for, I don't know, three, four, five years. And so I think that it's time that, at least for this site, that we go ahead and continue with the RFP process that has already started, because that would give value to tomorrow for each tenant that's there and each tenant that could be there in that timeframe. So, thank you.
Thanks, Sharice. Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to council. And Red, you want to start us off on discussion?
I'm satisfied to go ahead with this RFQ as presented. I want to talk a little bit about off-the-hook. I value our advisory board actions, and I respect their recommendations. And in this case, I think they are correct. It would be unfair to the applicants at this point to tell them again that, no, we're going to do something different with the off-the-hook property. And we've just had a lot of vacillation already, and I think it's time to go ahead and proceed with that RFP. Also, as Sharice pointed out, G-PAC did note that off-the-hook is physically separated from the rest of the Market Plaza. And that makes it kind of odd. And there's a, there are two different kinds of ownership. The city has Market Plaza under fee simple, off-the-hook is a Thailand's lease, and I think that's an unnecessary complication to try to combine those properties. So I am at this point ready to move forward with the RFQ as presented.
Thanks, Red. Matt?
Yes, I'm also ready to go ahead with this Market Plaza RFQ and keeping off-the-hook separate. I do believe Red did it perfectly, thank you. And so, there we go.
Okay. Good. John?
Yeah, I thank you, Red, for saying what you did. I absolutely agree. I think it's a fair process. I'm one of fairness for those that have submitted the RFP and gone through a very prolonged, drawn-out process, not by anybody's fault or anything, but just because. And I also respect, I just want to echo that, the G-PAC's input and what they've had to say. And Matt, I agree with your agreement, so I agree with sending out the RFQ, not including the existing RFP site off-the-hook.
Great. Marlaus?
Well, I have a few suggestions for the RFQ, as opposed to as written. First of all, I would like to see it broader in terms of the people that are qualified. And I would write it to the, what I said earlier, a mixed-use visitor-serving that could include a hotel, so that we could get other ideas if possible. This, the way it's written seems to really say, we're going to, we want a 50-room-plus full-service hotel. And I'm not sure that's what we really want there. I also noted that the RFQ seemed to focus more on development than on successful operation of a hotel, if it's a hotel, or any establishment it is. And since we would expect them to also operate it, I would like to make sure that we ensure that they are qualified to do that also. And then I would suggest for the evaluation criteria, I have four that I would do equally, and I'm going to just throw them out there, you can consider them. I didn't feel that the distinctions you had were clear. First would be a financial, clear financial history of the applicant, how they financed other projects, a history of all the financing for other projects, and their own financial history, so finance. Then, successful development of similar-sized projects, so the development aspect. And then successful history of operation of a similar type and size project. And finally, their kind of understanding of who we are and what we might be looking for, the quality of the team, and their basically understanding Moro Bay and what Moro Bay might want to put there. So that's, I don't know if others are going to agree with that, but...
Is that all, Marlaus?
That, yes.
Okay. All right. Good. Thanks. Thanks for that. So, well, let me just add some comments. I've got some comments as well. So on page 103 of 117, so page five of the RFQ, where it lists the respondents to this RFQ are expected to pay special attention, then there's bullet points. So there are, those are all the bullet points. So a lot of that was fed in by our G-PAC, correct? Okay. So I just wanted to add one in there for consideration, and the language I crafted was possible parking options for proposed boutique hotels on waterfront-side lease sites. And I actually, you know, named the three sites, which would be Roses, libertine, and off-the-hook. If those three sites have proposed hotel operations, so I just want to see the development site incorporate some options for parking. And that may be contrary to what G-PAC was saying, that the sites are separate, but interesting, I think last year, I went to League of California Cities Conference in Long Beach, pretty same arrangement. You had a parking structure, and then you'd walk to your, so the distance, of course, that was Long Beach, but, so I really don't identify too much, but if, we're still talking about those sites where we still have to manage some parking arrangement. So I want to be able to have, I wanted to insert that language into the RFQ for consideration. So it would consider those three lights, if there are three lease sites, if there's boutique hotels over there, there could be parking options included in that. And then, of course, we can get to discussion on whether or not that's acceptable to everybody. And then I want to ensure that the RFQs that we have are standalone. So I know the options could be, that could include the waterfront lease sites as part of the development of that. I just want to make sure that they're apples for apples. So if we're doing this RFQ and we're looking at Market Plaza, it's Market Plaza, and everybody is kind of competing within that blue box area. Do you know what I mean?
Market Plaza, and we want them to do this, the improvements for Sentinel Parkway.
Yeah. I mean, I'm just saying that if it's going out there for RFQ, that all the players understand that they're dealing with the RFQ that deals with Market Plaza, and that's what we should be reviewing.
Correct.
And if there's the, if there's the addition of, hey, we can do this water, if we could do, you know, include other lease sites that are on the water, I just want to separate that out. I want to see what the Market Plaza RFQ proposal looks like. If there's the inclusion of something else, I just want to make sure that everybody has a fair playing field. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Could I ask a question for clarification?
Yeah.
Are you saying that, or would the group be saying that if you received a response to an RFQ that included more than those two sites, that you would deem it as being non-responsive and wouldn't want to consider it?
No. Thank you for saying that. I just want to know that if it, if we get an RFQ that goes beyond that, I want to, I want to know that certainly then they can go ahead and submit that, that goes beyond that, but I want to see what one looks without it. So the same people are, everybody's on the same playing field on what that Market Plaza proposal would look like.
So if you...
So they would have to submit two proposals. Does that, does that make sense?
So you need to, you want the, you want the Market Plaza standalone piece, so we can evaluate them by themselves, and if it was the other thing along with it, okay, fine.
Everybody that's coming in, we're evaluating for what's there. And, you know, if there's two proposals that says, hey, I can do this just as well as everybody else, but then we're adding this, that's fine. Because I think it's just going to add to the confusion in discussion on, hey, we've got, you know, multiple here, just like, just want to be able to separate it out, so we're looking at just the proposal of Market Plaza. If we're adding to that, that's fine, but that could be a separate one we could look at. If there's 10 people that are looking at, we have 10 proposals that says, here's what our, here's what our ideas are. That's, that's what I'm, does that make sense? Okay.
Not for me. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm still unclear, and I don't know, Scott, if you could feed it back.
Sure.
It was, or are we not doing an RFQ for the combined sites of Sentinel Parkway?
The RFQ is to develop the areas that are on the board there, that are green and blue.
Green and blue. Right.
So I think what the mayor was saying is if, Roses Landing's in the process right now, so we use that as an example.
Right.
They're in the process right now. The owner of that lease site is Doug Reddigan. Doug Reddigan decides, I'm going to propose on this. And he's going to include his Roses Landing, because it's right across the street, and he's going to wrap it into here. Fine, go ahead and do that, but show us standalone what the Market Plaza thing looks like, and this is the add-on. I mean, give us your ideas for that, you know, what you're...
Got it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Mayor, you just kept saying Market Plaza, and I thought you were excluding the other, but I get it now.
Okay.
That's great. No problem.
Thanks for explaining that. Okay. That's what, that's what we're doing. Okay.
Can I just add?
Can I take, I'll make a motion to go beyond 11 o'clock? Can I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can we have some discussion?
Discussion.
I would be willing to extend until 11:10, because I think this is an important project, but I am opposed to going beyond 11 o'clock normally.
Thank you. Thanks for clarifying, Red. Any other discussion?
Thanks.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. So we have three, two, to go beyond 11. Okay. All right. So those are the comments. Okay. So any, so let's, let's just...
Can I just add one thing? I did not mention where I stood on off-the-hook, and I would like to say that I also oppose including off-the-hook site in this RFQ.
So we have, so we have consensus, and I would agree, so we're good on that. Now it's just a matter of the language. So you've asked for some language, I've asked for some language, and I just want to understand, you know, how we're going to, how you interpreted that. And I would just, I guess, recommend that just come back on consent, and then we'll do it that way. And I don't necessarily know if there's the urgency, two more weeks is going to make much difference.
Come back on consent with the draft RFQ.
Yeah. Based on the, based on the discussions we're having.
Okay.
With, and I, but I'm not assuming, I'm not assuming that this is agreed upon. So I have to turn to my left here and make sure that we're having discussion on...
If I could pipe in here and turn, I would be leery about putting it on consent, especially with the point that Marlaus is making, the number of caveats that you put in there. I would like to talk about those.
Okay.
You're just, you're talking in terms of reducing the rooms, in terms of, I think, how'd you say, mixed use?
I just didn't want it to be so specific to...
I agree.
We're just getting a proposal for essentially a full-service hotel with more than 50 rooms.
And so the only reason I would say, bring it up, maybe not consent, is because you make a very good point, and I would like to just be able to talk about that instead of doing consent.
Okay. Yeah, no problem. Red, sorry.
I would be... Can I just, if you have something, you could talk about it now.
Yeah, that, I was going to do that.
Councilmember.
How about that?
Yeah. Go ahead. Go ahead, Red.
Yeah. I am happy to stipulate all of the points that Marlaus made and that Jamie made, and to vote right now.
Okay.
Okay. I'm not, I just want Marlaus one more time to explain the equal weighting. And I'm sorry, I didn't write it down the first time, but I'll write it down this time so I can understand it. Thank you.
Well, I felt that there are four key areas that we want them to demonstrate their proficiency, their history, their knowledge, their experience in. One, and it can be written, I didn't write it all exactly, but the first is the financial, how they fund, how they raise money, their own financial history, the finances. The second is their experience in successful development of similar-sized projects and types of projects. The third is the successful operation, because once it's built, you want to make sure that they've at least got a team together that can operate it, because we don't want them to build it and walk away. And the fourth is what I would call their understanding of our community and our needs, and what they might show as similar projects that show that they understand Moro Bay and our, the type of community we are. So that, those are the four areas. I don't care as much about the weighting. The weighting could be more emphasis on the financial less on the other.
Okay. Yeah.
May I ask you a question? Councilmember McPherson, on page 109, there's a list under 6.1 of experience and qualifications evaluation criteria. The only one that you mentioned that isn't on this list already, the way I'm reading it, is the last one about wanting to know the Moro Bay community.
Right. I was actually looking at where they actually get into the scale, the description of the scale.
Marlaus, I think he brings it...
15% of is financial.
Right.
I think that's more important. So maybe it's only the operation that is not successful operation?
Well, I see experience in operation as being redundant. If they're experienced hoteliers, then are they not going to have operational experience?
Well, assuming that it's, they're part of the team.
You know, I feel comfortable that it's, your questions are answered right here, personally.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Okay.
I mean, I think they're good points, but I think, I think they're, I think they're addressed.
So do you, do you think that the finances is, should be more than 15% weighting?
I wasn't getting into the detail of whether or not the weighting was one way or the other, just that it was on there.
Okay.
But, you know, if you have a preference on how it's weighted, I'm fine with that.
No, I'm willing to.
Yeah. Is any other comments yet, Matt?
No, Marlaus, if you could maybe kind of go on a little bit about your idea of taking off the number of rooms specifically, and how would you like that worded? Because I thought that was a very good point.
I think...
Yeah, I think Scott got that.
Did you get that?
A mixed-use visitor-serving project that could include a...
That could include hotel facilities, restaurants.
Yes.
Retail.
Right. There you go.
All the stuff that we have in there, just reordering and say it could include these types of things, as an example.
Okay.
A little less hard and fast, and a little more like, hey, the broad range.
Okay.
Okay. Uh-huh.
Anything else? Anything else?
So, yeah, I was just going to agree with her, I think finance is important and just, if you changed the evaluation scale and made number one, a 20% factor, and made number two, a 35% factor, and the other two remained the same, I think it weights the finances a little more heavily and you cool with that?
Thank you.
So moved.
That sounds great.
Yep, okay. Anything else? So did we get it, Marlaus, there? And then, a couple of comments here, I think we're good to go.
I'm completely...
And then, basically the direction or the consensus was, hey, based on these discussions, we're good to go ahead and approve it, we trust that it's going to be implemented and that we're good to go.
So you need a motion?
So, we need a motion.
So I've moved that we move forward with the RFQ process as presented with the changes that were elaborated on, summarized and agreed upon by the group.
I second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Heding, a second by Mr. Davis. Any further discussion? You're okay with that?
I agree.
Okay, good. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries 5-0. Great, thank you. And then, our final one, adoption of ordinance number 611, reauthorizing the public education and governmental access channel fee. And, Mr. Penone?
Right.
Yep, thank you.
Very quickly, last time you introduced this ordinance and tonight it's on for adoption, this is to continue the peg fee for the cable company.
Okay, great. Thanks for that. And so we've already gone through this, any public comment? I'm not seeing any public comment, don't have any speaker slips. Any questions or discussion to my left or to my right? I'd take a motion. We still have to read this into the record as, pardon me?
You read the title last time, all you needed to do is say, you were motion adopted.
Staff recommendation.
Staff recommendations.
Second.
Second.
We have staff recommended, we have a staff recommendation by Mr. Davis, second by Mr. Heding. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. And then, council declaration of future agenda items, Marlaus?
Oh, I do. Yes, I do. I would like to agendize a discussion of the marijuana survey process. Red and I are on the subcommittee and we have met and we have a draft survey, but we really do need some direction from the council on how to actually administer that survey, so.
Okay.
Which may involve money.
Okay, okay. We should have all support on that? Great, thank you. John?
Yes, thank you. I just have to get all these notes. Okay, I have had actually several discussions in the last week and a half or two weeks and/or emails on the noise ordinance. And so I would like to agendize the noise ordinance and have it reviewed. The specific recent issues are concerns by folks that have family members that they take care of and/or themselves, that garbage pickup often comes early and interferes with sleep. There were concerns about the dredging noise, which may be just specific to this year, but I think that's, that's an issue. And then the street sweeper has also been mentioned a number of times. And so, we haven't reviewed that for a number of years and I propose that we do review that and share some comments.
So I have a comment, I'm looking to Joe. So as far as agendizing that for a discussion from council, or could we agendize that and have our planning commission review that? John, I'm just, I'm both looking for Joe and John. Joe?
Based on the concerns you raised, I'm not quite sure it's the noise ordinance you want to review. I mean, two out of those three, or all three, are contractors with the city, so if it's a, if what you want to do is review and consider changing the way that we allow those operations to happen, I can understand that. But I don't think you want to, because even if you change the noise ordinance, I'm not sure you, you're going to have that affect those three entities.
So, there were some concerns in the noise ordinance as I looked at it about the specified times and the, the type of noise that is allowed at a certain time. So my sense was that's a review of, of the, the basic issue, but also concern about violation of the contract and noise issues there. So Joe advised me how I would best agendize that.
So it was more than just those three items?
Yes.
Okay, so you want to have the ordinance reviewed?
Yes.
Okay, so my question was, do you want to bring that ordinance back to council? And then my question to Joe was, can we, when we agendize something like, can we have that agenda item, just go straight to planning commission with some criteria or do we have to have that discussion as a council first? And then I'm asking John if that would be, if that...
If you want to add criteria, you have to bring it back to you. If you just want to have it, the planning commission review the noise ordinance, you could ask them to review the noise ordinance.
Would we list the specific concerns and give the rationale for why we're wanting it reviewed? My sense is they would review it in absentia of knowledge.
They would get a copy of what you just said tonight.
Okay. Either way, I just, I want to get it reviewed. It'll end up here ultimately, I guess, so. Whatever's best for process and whatever you advise, Mayor and/or Joe.
It's probably not enough direction for the planning commission to do anything with it.
The noise ordinance isn't, is the noise a part of the zoning code or is, it's separate from the zoning?
It's separate.
Okay.
So the issue, you were correct, the issues that he was describing mostly relate to our contracts. The street sweeper, that's something we get complaints about or have over time, I mean, I've received several of them because half the complaints come in, the city come to me. Yeah, yeah, so, but it's, it's, you know, the contract's managed by Rob for that, so...
So we'll bring it back to council.
Yeah, probably.
All right. So do we have consensus on that? I'm looking to my left. We've got two, three, four, five, so we got five. So we got five of five on both, just so that, you, you need to know that, right? Dana? Okay, thank you. So we have a noise ordinance to review. And with that, since no more, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thanks. Next meeting is Tuesday, April 4th, 2017, at 3:00 p.m. We have a special, we have a goal special work session at 3:00 p.m. at the community center. And then Tuesday, April 11th, we have our regular Kent City Council meeting. Thank you, good night.